Okay, you are live. No. Just a second, just a second. Let me go back here and do one more thing. I apologize for the confusion. Take me just a minute. Okay. You are ready.
Good evening and welcome to the virtual meeting of the City of Dublin Planning and Zoning Commission. The Ohio Legislature passed several emergency laws to address the pandemic, including the ability for public entities to conduct virtual meetings. We appreciate this ability to maintain our continuity of government and will be holding our meetings online and live streaming on YouTube until further notice. You can access the live stream on the city's website. We welcome your comments on cases. In order to submit any questions or comments during the meeting, please use the form under the streaming video on the city's website. Your questions and comments. To maintain our continuity of government and. Your questions and comments will be relayed to the commission by the meeting moderator. Please provide a valid name and address when submitting your comments and please refrain from making any inappropriate comments. We want to accommodate public participation and comments to the greatest extent possible and we certainly appreciate your patience. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and we are going to, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Anyone who has video on, if you could turn your video off, your audio should remain on as we participate in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States. And to the republic which stands with us. One nation, broad. Thank you, everyone. Ms. Beal, would you please call roll?
Mr. Schneer.
Here.
Ms. Fox.
Here.
Ms. Call.
Here.
Mr. Grimes.
Here.
Ms. Kennedy.
Here.
Fishman.
Mr. Fishman. No, you're still muted, Mr. Fishman.
Yeah, how?
There you are.
Okay.
Ms. Beal, can you please?
Mr. Suplack.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. Tonight, we are looking to have a motion on the table to accept tonight's documents into the record and approve the minutes for the commission. I did submit one minor modification to the commission and to Ms. Beal just a few moments ago, requesting a minor change to my comments. Amending parking lot spaces are calculated according to, to parking lot spaces for different uses can be calculated according to. I have a motion to accept tonight's documents and minutes into the record.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman, Mr. Grimes, Ms. Beal.
Mr. Suplack.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Mr. Fishman.
Mr. Fishman, one more time.
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy.
Yes.
Ms. Call.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Schneer.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. The Planning and Zoning Commission is an advisory board to city council when rezoning and planning of property are under consideration. In such cases, city council will receive recommendations from the commission. In other cases, the commission will have the final decision-making responsibility. Anyone who intends to address the commission on any of these administrative cases must be sworn in. The agenda order is typically determined at the beginning of the meeting by the chair. The rules and regulations of the Planning and Zoning Commission state that no new agenda items are to be introduced after 10:30 PM. We have one case eligible for the consent agenda today. Case number five, number nineteen dash one, one, one amended final development plan for construction of a, an approximately fifteen hundred square foot vacuum shelter and associated site modifications on a three acre site for an existing car wash, car wash. Ms. Fox, do you have a comment on this case before we take a motion?
I do. I just wanted to suggest the possibility of, I thought the design was well done, especially the green roof on the side adjacent to, I think it was residential. And if we could ask the applicant about the possibility in order to balance that car wash as you enter on the south elevation, to balance the north elevation's green roof, if there was a possibility that possibly at the columns, there might be some planters or some kind of greenscape that would then present that same kind of natural image on the south side as you have on the north elevation. So that would be a suggestion that I'd like to make, that possibly we have some planters or some sort of a landscape feature that would just, just balance the other side of that car wash.
Is the commission comfortable with direction from Ms. Fox to have the applicant work with staff on planters? I am seeing at least four, so moving forward, does anyone wish to pull this case off of the agenda? And then legal looking to you with the additional condition, do we need to make a motion?
Yes, please. That would be great.
I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman, thank you, Mr. Grimes for the second, Ms. Beal.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Ms. Call.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Schneer.
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Suplack.
Yes.
Mr. Fishman.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. Anyone intending to address the commission on any cases this evening, please raise your right hand and answer in the affirmative. I'll wait for you to turn your video on. Jenny Claudia, can you confirm that everyone who needs to be sworn in's video is on for the record?
We still need Jessica and Steven.
Okay, looks like Jessica is here.
And then Mr. Butler.
Perfect. All right. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony to this commission?
Yes.
I do.
Yes, I do.
Thank you. All right. Moving on, it looks like we are to case number one, Jermaine Lexus of Dublin, thirty-eight fifty-five and thirty-eight eighty-five West Dublin Granville Road Minor Project Review and Jermaine Lexus of Dublin, case twenty dash one, one, four MSP. I don't remember if I said Jermaine Lexus, the other case number nineteen dash one, one, three MPR, located at the same address for a minor project review and a master sign plan. We have two cases on tonight's agenda, both involving an automotive dealership. The first application is a request for review and approval of minor project for a renovated plaza with a wing wall, pedestrian canopy, and minor landscape modifications. The second application is for a master sign plan that includes two new wall signs and the removal of a single wall sign. The site is southwest at the intersection of West Dublin Granville Road with Dublin Center Drive and Zone Bridge Street District Office. We will hear both cases together tonight. Nikki, do you have our case presentation?
Yes, I do. Good evening, as mentioned, this is our request for a minor review and a master sign plan for Jermaine Lexus of Dublin. This application was previously before the commission in January of 2020 and originally before the commission in August of 2019 informally. The site is located south of West Dublin Granville Road and east of Dublin Center Drive. The automotive dealership is comprised of two parcels with the new car store on the western parcel and the used car store on the eastern parcel. The subject area of the site this evening is highlighted here in red and is an existing plaza between the new and used car stores, which is proposed to be renovated with this application. These are the existing conditions. You can see here, the existing plaza is a mix of hard surfaces as well as landscaping. This is the plan that was viewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission in August of 2019. Informally, you'll notice here the, the cant of the proposed wing wall as well as the large canopy with skylights. This design was further revised and brought before the commission in January of 2020. The commission at that time had a number of comments regarding the design of the wall and expressed concern that the wall was no longer canted. The footprint of the canopy had been significantly reduced and the trees north of the building were not proposed to be preserved. Since January, the applicant has revised the plan and the plan is significantly similar to the original plan that was before the commission informally. You'll notice the trees north of the building are proposed to be preserved. The wing wall is canted and the geography of the covered canopy is expanded and includes skylights. This is the character of the proposed wing wall with January 2020 on the top and August 2020 on the bottom. You can see here the angle of the wing wall between the two existing buildings. The applicant has indicated it is the intent of these site modifications to modernize the site and building architecture while bringing it more closely in line with the goals and objectives of the Bridge Street District. Both the landscape design as well as the architectural and sign design address the existing conditions in a creative manner. This is the east elevation, January 2020 and August 2020. You'll notice here the applicant has revised the wing wall design to be fully clad in engineered stone and the bronze ACM metal panel no longer slices through the stone. The openings in the wing wall will be illuminated with soft LED lighting in the evening to highlight both pedestrian areas as well as vehicle display. You'll notice here that the proposed Lexus logo sign is uniquely integrated into the design of the plaza. This is the proposed character, which is substantially similar to what the commission saw originally. Additionally, the applicant has provided experience images of the movable seating. The applicant will provide additional detail in their presentation regarding the materials. However, the primary materials are stone and brick. The furniture is proposed to be a landscape forms furniture and the existing electric generator will be clad in a slat wall in a cityscape. This is the proposed landscape plan. The most significant change to the landscape plan is the preservation of the two trees north of the building to soften the wing wall as the Planning and Zoning Commission requested. Additionally, with this application, approval of a master sign plan is requested. The site was originally developed prior to rezoning into the Bridge Street District. Therefore, the existing signs were permitted under the CDD. Presently, there are three signs on the site. The new car store has two signs, which is proposed to be reduced to a single sign with this application and the used car store has one sign. So with the removal of one sign, two Lexus logos are proposed to be installed and integrated into the wing wall. These logos are twenty-four square feet in size each and represent a hybrid between the existing sign design, but provide a modern edge with illumination that changes from black during the day to white at night. In review of the minor project review as well as the master sign plan criteria and the Bridge Street District Sign Design Guidelines, staff is recommending approval of the minor project with three conditions and the master sign plan with one condition. Be happy to answer any questions the commission has this evening, otherwise the applicant is here as well.
Thank you, Nikki. If we could turn some time over to the applicant before we do questions for staff and the applicant, is the applicant present?
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, Mr. Todd. Do you have a presentation for us this evening or would you like to talk through some of the changes that were made between the last time we saw you and now?
Yes, I would briefly thank you for the summary, Nikki. I had planned to go in detail about the comments from before, but frankly, Nikki did a better job than I would have done. The, the main comments we had heard last time was about the slant of the wall that we had taken that out, which we've discussed with our client and he feels comfortable taking on some of the risk of building our canopy over that electrical easement that is on the site, which was the reason we had straightened it out before. So we, he feels comfortable putting the plaza back on that side and which was a big reason for us changing it back. One of the other comments we had heard last time had to do with the canopy design itself, that it had kind of lost something, was one of the comments we had heard. And we made a strong effort to create a steel structure that could provide open, you know, skylight atmosphere while also being covered in other areas without really changing the language of it, which we think is a lot closer to what the commission saw a year ago. But aside from that, the, the only other piece I wanted to discuss briefly was the materials that Nikki had mentioned. We, we made an effort with the materials to, as Nikki mentioned, modernize the site a little bit, but also not put it, not completely disregard what is existing, which is why the, the red brick has a little rougher texture to it, kind of pay homage to the existing buildings. The black brick is a little smoother because it's a little more of a contemporary look to, to fit with the blade wall. And then the stone on the blade wall is, is a little smoother, which has a little bit more of a modern feel, but the color of it really fits in with the pre-owned building and the used car building. So we really tried to make sure we were balancing the, the modern feel of this structure with the existing buildings themselves. But other than that, myself and our landscape architect Greg Crowbot are here to answer any questions that the commission has. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Todd. At this time with the commission, I'll take questions for both staff and the applicant if we have any. Ms. Fox.
I have, I have a couple of questions about the landscape features. I noticed there's quite a bit of hews and some, some evergreens for around. There's, I love, I think the hydrangeas will be a beautiful accent. I'm just wondering in the winter, I'm not familiar with a threadleaf blue star. Just wondering about the balance of evergreen around the perimeter and, and then the new landscaping. If the landscape architect could just talk to us about his plant choices and whether or not they'll be sufficient because hydrangeas end up just being sticks in the winter if, if they aren't balanced well with some other things. So if you could just talk to us a little bit about that.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. This is Greg Crowbot, the landscape architect for the project. The direction that I heard from planning staff was that they wanted to see some color in the space and that they actually wanted to see year-round color. Now, that certainly is difficult in, in some sense in, in central Ohio, which is why I did indeed put the evergreen hues in place. So we will have that structure and I tried to use them structurally, much the same as the wing wall and the, and the blocking of the pavements and, and those sorts of things. But then on top of it, I did use two different kinds of hydrangeas. And so we will get that color in the summer. I mean, the one hydrangea, the bobo is, is a white color. It's a dwarf hydrangea. The other one, the smooth hydrangea has a red colored flower to it. And then along, those along with the spirea again will have color at different times during, during the growing season. The threadleaf plant that you discussed is the only perennial that I'm using. So we will get some, what I'm trying to do, what I try to do in all my designs is to get things to change, get the landscape to change as we move through the seasons. And so that one perennial will have blue flowers in the spring. Quite frankly, I think the threadleaf quality of the plant is what is really rich during the growing season and contrast with the other textures of the different plants. I, I would suggest that the hydrangeas, much of the, much of the fall and, and certainly much of the winter, I have both of those hydrangeas in my garden and the flowers are indeed persistent and are present. Now, they are a, they are a papery, you know, color, parchment color, if you will, but there is some flower there. Now, yeah, once they get hit with, if we ever have snow again in Ohio, once they get hit with the snow, that knocks those, that can knock those flowers off, even though I would suggest those flowers with a little snow on top is really quite delightful. So you see what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to get flowers all year long. I'm trying to get color as much as, as possible in the growing season and that's kind of my approach to this garden.
Thank you, Mr. Crowbot. Ms. Fox, does that answer your question on landscaping?
It does, and I, and I have to compliment the fact that, that, you know, in this redesign, I think what we're looking for obviously was we fill in these little, these little areas along the street with renovation. That creates that kind of vibrancy, the change of colors, the ability to have this little patio to see people sitting out there. I think you're really meeting the intent of the Bridge Street code by doing that sort of thing. Appreciate that. I appreciate you explaining that to us. Thanks so much for that.
Perfect.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Are there any other questions for either staff or the applicant from the commission? All right, Ms. Kennedy, do you want to kick us off with comments on this application this evening?
Sure, thank you, Ms. Call. I, I, I'm really excited about this project. I just want to compliment the applicant for taking the feedback of this commission back in January to heart and making changes per many of the suggestions on the, the wing wall canted, tree preservation, color, as Jane already has touched on. So just want to really compliment, compliment you, the applicant, on bringing our feedback back into view on this latest application and my compliments and, and you have my support of the minor project review.
Any comments, Ms. Kennedy, on the master sign plan?
So for the master sign plan, it sounds like we're trading one sign for two logos, basically. And the logos are on the same, well, I mean, they're on the same structure, if you will. So generally speaking, this seems to, seems to be in line because we're still under this total square footage. So I would be, I would be on board with this proposed sign plan as well.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Mr. Suplack, you want to go next?
It's a good design. Dustin, Gregory, I appreciate you guys, again, everything Christina said, I appreciate you guys bearing with us. I think you guys probably were as conscious as we were that when the wall uncanted, it kind of, the whole space lost something, the design lost something. There's something elegant about this solution, so, so kudos for getting, getting us there. I'm, I'm supportive across the board, supportive with the signs as they are supportive with the design.
Thank you, Mr. Suplack. Mr. Fishman. You're muted.
Hey, ditto. I, I echo the comments of our first two commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Mr. Schneer.
I wasn't involved in any of these deliberations, so I come in and say, I don't know what transpired before, but it looks awesome now, so I'm total full support.
Thank you very much, Mr. Schneer. Mr. Grimes.
I really like the way that wall accents the whole property, brings it together. I think that's a beautiful touch. The signage raises the bar in terms of elegance, I think, in the site. Just a point, a question on the merger of the two parcels into one. I would presume that that doesn't materially change any of the parameters that have been discussed. I'm just throwing that out there. Is that impacted any one way or another? That been discussed already? Fact that you went from two parcels to one or will go?
Ms. Martin, can you speak to Mr. Grimes' comment about the two parcels into one?
Yeah, for sure. So the reason that that is a condition of planning approval is that since this is a new accessory structure that spans both parcels, it won't meet the minimum required setbacks if they leave them as two separate parcels. Planning had initially collaborated with the applicant who had collaborated with the property owners to make them aware that this would need to happen and I think ultimately they're in agreement. Maybe Dustin can speak to that a little further.
And just to cover our bases, we do have that as a condition. So any, any continuance of this would require that those parcels be combined.
Correct. They could not obtain their building permit if they don't.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's all I got.
All right, thank you, Mr. Grimes. Ms. Fox.
I also, I really appreciate of the revisions that were made. Particularly, I like the fact that, that the landscape design and the newer materials and the awnings really speak to the street. I also think it totally enhances the dealership's frontage. I appreciate the fact that the, the slat wall was used around the, the air conditioner or the electric unit. I think that really makes a difference. I also want to compliment the use of the LED lightings around the arches. I think that's going to be a nice element. So I have a couple of questions, though, I didn't think to ask earlier. One is on the landscape design. Will you be using any kind of lighting to enhance the entire patio area as well as using the, the lighting to, to kind of enhance the arches? Will there be any additional landscape lighting?
Dustin, that's really your call.
We hadn't planned on it up to this point. All the lighting that we had planned on was under the, the structure and in those arches that you had mentioned.
You know, I certainly don't think it needs to be a condition, but your, your impression from the street as people begin to walk and we're starting to fill in, we're starting to see fill-in along the street. Your ability to use some nice evening lighting for people who might sit there from the street might really be an enhancement that would, would play well, I think, from street vitality.
So Ms. Fox, would you be comfortable if we just, you know, look to express our appreciation if they were to incorporate additional landscape lighting?
I, you know, you've done so much here and I think it's, it's really great, but I, I think it would be really nice. You know, people will use your patio area waiting for the cars to be serviced and that sort of thing. And many times they'll do that in the evening when they go to pick up. I just think it might be, it might be a nice accent, but I would just express an interest in that, but I, I wouldn't certainly make it a condition because I think you've done, you've done a lot here to do some really nice things. The second question I'd have for you is about the, the logo sign. I noticed that it didn't change any and we had talked about doing something that's, you know, kind of architecturally more significant and I do think it plays well to the wing wall. And I think it's certainly the logo that Lexus uses all over the country. But as I did other Lexus logos, I noticed some were backlit. This one is simply the same font style and of the same material that you have on your front. Did you look at any other kind of ways to enhance or to highlight the logo?
Mr. Todd, as you're going into that, just to piggyback on it, can you speak to the difference between the nighttime look and the daytime look? Nikki touched on it, but I don't think it really hit home, so if you could speak to that as well.
I'd be happy to. The, what we were attempting to do with the, the nighttime. The, what we were attempting to do with the, the nighttime look and the daytime look and the, the design of that sign was to match the signage that's already on the building because the, it does the same thing. And if you've, the, the service center down the road has that same look as well where it's black during the day. And when it lights up at night, it looks white with like kind of a black perimeter around the edge. So our, our intent was really to try and fit in with the rest of the signage on the site, on the blade wall, instead of trying to do something that was different than what was already there.
And I appreciate that. I think when we look at the master sign plans, one of the criteria is that you do something unique and different to kind of, to catch the eye, I guess I would say. And I've noticed in some of the Lexus logos, they'll have a, a logo that's, that's either backlit, that can change from day to night. I just wondered if you had, that was one of the comments we made, to do something a little bit, little edgier, but still maintain the Lexus logo. Wondered if you had looked at other options on that?
We hadn't explored a backlit at this time.
Or a change in the font, or just making it a little bit more different than the others? Is there, yeah?
I, I think exploring the backlit could be an option. Changing the font is, is very, very difficult with dealerships in order to meet the manufacturer's requirements.
Right. I guess what, when I don't really mean changing the font, it's the way that, the, the logo, some of them are shaped with different materials, they're, they're backlit. I've seen, well, I've just seen so many different ones and I, I think this is a significant wall. I think the logo is going to make a difference when you come up and down the street. I'm not opposed to it. I guess I was just hoping for a little bit more premium feeling on the look of that logo than rather just a replication of what is on the, the wall. Those are my comments. I, I don't know that it requires, if the rest of the commission is happy with it, I'm, I'm happy with it too. It's just, it's just a thought that when we look at these master sign plans and we're looking at these logos, to get them to look as high quality and as premium as we could possibly get them and not try to just repeat something we already have. So those are just my thoughts.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. I'll tie us up. Mr. Fishman, I'll come back to you in just one moment. I, I just also want to echo fellow commissioners, Ms. Kennedy, Mr. Fishman, Mr. Suplack, Mr. Schneer, Mr. Grimes, Ms. Fox. They all have different, different compliments for you this evening. And the main one that you'll see consistent throughout is thank you very much for listening to us the last time you came before us. So I know that we're not always the easiest people to deal with because we're the ones doing the critique and we're the ones finding all of the details that could be improved, but I think you've done a remarkable job. Specifically, we're looking at the slant of the wall. That came back and, and we express our appreciation for the work that went into looking at that a third time to see what could be done. The canopy, the size of those canopies, the downlighting, the skylights, the tree preservation. As you know, Dublin is huge into trees and especially those mature trees. You won't hear any one of us say, yep, rip them out because that's just not who we are. So thank you very much for listening to us. I, I will just comment for a moment on the logos themselves. That wing wall is, is attractive. It is a pretty architectural detail. The logos themselves, you look at the other buildings and the count of letters that are on those buildings. If every person, every applicant came in and wanted a logo instead of 14 letters, it would be a very easy day for us because logos have the same impact. We, as humans, we see a logo and we know what it means. That brand recognition is important and that the criteria, the trademark, the logos, the fonts, everything is important to our culture. And so to see something that has been incorporated, and I love the daytime nighttime look, it would be so easy to slap a metal logo up there and maybe throw a spotlight up on it so that it's visible at nighttime, but you've done more than that. You've gone above. And while there are restrictions for the display of the logo due to the manufacturer and the branding, I think you've done a great job incorporating that in and making it really more art than it is just brand recognition. So thank you very much. We, we look forward to seeing the change. With that, Mr. Fishman, did you have one more comment that you wanted to bring up? You're muted.
There we go. Okay, now I can hear me, okay. Those are great accolades and I agree. My question's a mechanical question for staff. Combining the parcels, will that negatively or positively negatively affect the, the sign master plan when they do the next remodel 10 years from now? In other words, will they be allowed more signs or, or bigger signs or whatever, since it is now one parcel twice as big? Can staff help me on that?
Yeah. So master sign plans are reviewed each time on their own merits. So the Planning and Zoning Commission would have the latitude to consider a new master sign plan at that time, irregardless of what is approved this evening. That being said, the way that the zoning code reads is it says that one sign is permitted per building or parcel. So even though it will be two buildings on one parcel, it would be permitted one sign per building plus a third sign because the building faces, the West building faces two streets. So it would remain the same status quo.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. At this time, I'm looking for public comment. Has any public comment been submitted on this item?
We have received none.
Thank you, Ms. Husak. All right. Commission, looking to you. I have two motions I am looking for. Minor project with three condition and a master sign plan with one. Mr. Grimes?
We approve the minor project review.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Ms. Beal?
Mr. Schneer?
Yeah.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Mr. Suplack?
Yes.
All right. And then the master sign plan.
We're going to approve the master sign plan.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Thank you, Mr. Suplack.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Mr. Suplack?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Schneer?
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. Thank you, Mr. Todd. Thank you to everyone who is here with you tonight. We appreciate the effort that's gone into those applications and working with staff and we look forward to seeing some facelifts over there on Dublin Grandville Road.
We are too. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, council members.
All right. Next up, we have Primrose School, case number 20-014CP, parcel number 273-009147 for a concept plan. This application is a request for the construction of a two-story, 15,000 square foot building for early childhood education. The site is south of West Dublin Grandville Road, west of the intersection with Dublin Center Drive and zone, the zoned Bridge Street District Office. Zach, do you have our case presentation this evening?
I do. Good evening, commissioners. Tonight, we are reviewing an application for review and approval of a concept plan. This is the first step in a three-step process for new construction within the Bridge Street District. The concept plan is meant for outlining the character and nature of proposed developments within the Bridge Street District. Typically with these applications, the applicant will submit site layouts, parking, architectural type or building type, and elevations of their proposal. The concept plan is meant to provide clear direction for the application following approval so that when the, the commission sees them for the preliminary development plan and the final development plan, they have a basis to go off of. Highlighted in yellow is the site in consideration tonight. The site is located south of West Dublin Grandville Road and is within the Bridge Street District Office zoning district. There are minimal natural features with the site except for a slight grade change between the, from the east to the west of the site as well as a tree, a tree lawn or tree line on the, the west boundary of the site. The portion of the site highlighted in yellow is an existing 100-foot wide electrical easement where there are overhead power lines. Any development on this site would have to stay out of this for any building or structure. So that, the 100 feet of that easement and with, would not be developable for a building. And shown in the photos, you can see, at least in the central photo, you can see the power lines that run over the, the site as well as you can see the vegetation, the minimal vegetation for a majority of this, the, the site, except for the line of trees that are on, in the central photo, which line the eastern or western property line. As shown on the screen is the street network system that was developed with the Bridge Street zoning code. This site, as it stands, currently sits at the intersection of two streets that are located on this, this map. The first would be West Dublin Grandville Road, which is a corridor connector and a principal fronted street. And to the east of the site would be a potential neighborhood street, which is currently not constructed, but with any development of this site, it would be constructed. The way that the applicant is moving forward with this site is to split it in half from east to west. So the site in consideration tonight would not have frontage on the West Dublin Grandville Road corridor. With the construction of the new neighborhood street, it would create a new block. Within the zoning code, new blocks are required to meet certain criteria in terms of dimensions and size. This newly created block would be, have bounds of the neighborhood street to the east, Stone Ridge Lane to the south, Shamrock Boulevard to the west, and West Dublin Grandville Road to the north. With this newly created block and comparing it to the requirements of the zoning code for newly created blocks, this block would not meet the requirements for newly created blocks. So a waiver would be required with the preliminary development plan. It should be noted that any development of this site would be required to install that neighborhood street. So a waiver would be required whether it's this application or if this application did not move forward, the next application would be required for this waiver as well. Shown on the screen is the previous concept plan that was reviewed back in May of 2020 with the commission. Highlighted in red on the map is the bounds of the existing site. With the creation of the neighborhood street, the applicant will be required to submit a preliminary and final, a final plat for dedication of the neighborhood street along the western or the eastern portion of this site. Along with the final plat or the, the replat of the site, they are proposing a lot split from east to west, which would create two lots out of the existing one lot. The, the dash red lot or black line that goes from east to west on the site is what was originally proposed for the, the bounds of this, these two lots. It was a regular shape and did cause issues with not being able to meet pavement or building setbacks and also not being centered on the shared access drive. And part of the, the consideration at the last meeting and concerns from the commission were that it would not be feasible or possible to be able to develop equally the, the northern lot. With this proposal in May, the applicant had a southern access drive, which you can see along the southern border of the property that connected the neighborhood street to the parking for Primrose. And they also provided this parking configuration throughout the site that had a number of winged parking bays, especially in the northern site, that were concerns in terms of, of circulation for staff. Today, this is the concept plan that has been submitted for review. The applicant, again, is showing the lot split with the dedication of the neighborhood street. The applicant has worked with staff to adjust the lot lines of the two newly created parcels to make them more equal to each other and equally developable and marketable. The applicant has removed the southern access drive for the Primrose sites from the neighborhood street. Planning staff would like to continue to consider the options for this access drive should we need a connection to the street to the south, but this is an ongoing discussion between the applicant's planning staff and engineering staff. And also with this application, the applicant has provided somewhat of a site capacity study for the northern lot. As mentioned earlier, there were concerns from the commission regarding the feasibility of developing this northern site. The applicant has went ahead and provided a permitted building type with, with parking and open space to show that the lot now created has potential to be developed. The applicant, however, is not proposing this for the concept plan tonight. It was more of a reference to show that this newly created lot would be feasible. Should a future applicant want to develop this northern site, they would be required to come back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a concept plan. The southern site or the southern lot is up for consideration for the concept plan tonight. The applicant is proposing approximately 1,500 square foot, two-story childcare, child daycare center. It would have a 7,500 square foot footprint and would include the neighborhood street addition to the east. The applicant is proposing 38 parking spaces with this site. For a daycare use, a parking plan is required within the Bridge Street District. So this, the parking plan will need approval with the preliminary development plan. And the applicant will be required to provide a permitted open space for dedication. However, the applicant has not provided the specific location or type or open space type for this site. The applicant will continue to work with staff to determine the best possible location for this open space type for the preliminary development plan. Shown on the screen are the elevations that were proposed back in May of 2020. The applicant has since removed the two towers on the east and west elevations of the building as the commission had concerns regarding the incorporation of them into the building as they did not meet the requirements of the Bridge Street District and to alleviate a potential waiver. And here you can see the revised elevations. Much of the design has remained the same. The applicant is proposing brick, stone, and glass as the primary materials with cementous siding and metal panels as secondary materials. The applicant will be required at the preliminary development plan stage to provide a full analysis of the loft building type, which is the building type that they are choosing for this site and to also present any potential waivers that they would request from the commission. And shown on the screen is a proposed character that the applicant has provided since the last time there before the commission. And this should give you an idea of the materials and massing of the building in particular to the access drive and the neighborhood street to create that streetscape along that newly created road. Planning staff has reviewed this concept plan to all applicable criteria and are recommending approval with nine conditions tonight. If the commission has any questions for staff, I would be happy to answer them. If not, our applicants are here and would be willing to answer any of your concerns or questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. From the applicant side, who do we have here representing?
We have, this is Elena Miller. I am the project manager for the Primros of Bridge Park with ALT Architecture. You also have on the call our client, Ehab Scander, the owner of the property as well as multiple Primroses throughout the state of Ohio. And then you have Jim Alt, the owner and architect of ALT Architecture, and Steve Butler, the civil engineer and owner of Community Civil Engineers.
Thank you, Elena. Do you have a presentation for us this evening?
We feel that because the application was presented in May, the goal of this conversation is to essentially outline the changes, which we feel that Zach has done a great job of doing that. And we would like to move the conversation towards an approval.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. All right. All right, do we have questions from the commission? And we're looking specifically for questions for staff or the applicant.
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Fishman.
Are the, when the project is approved, are the easements going to be in place to be able to access the property to the north? They've split the properties. Are the easements going to be in place to do that?
So we would, our engineering team would would work with the applicant, especially with the plat. When they submit a preliminary and found of their final plat, we would make sure that the easement, the shared access easement would be there.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Fox, did you have a question?
I did. Originally, when we had some questions about this, so and I have three or four here, there was a concern that with a lot split, that they might not meet the required rear, that all the, that both parcels might not meet required rear and side yard setbacks. So Chase, I'm wondering, is that going to be a concern going forward?
We currently meet the requirements for setbacks for both properties.
For both properties?
Correct.
And originally, the partial was going to be developed so that they shared utilities and stormwater management. And now that you have two parcels, how will that sharing of utilities and stormwater management be managed, or will it be necessary to share them?
We still intend to share utilities as well as stormwater management and detention. Steve, if you'd like to add any information, that'd be great, but to to date and up to this conversation, we intend to work with Aaron to finalize that design. But Steve, can you add a little more information there?
Oh, the the detention basin would be, we would be looking at sharing the detention. Kind of makes sense to use one facility rather than two, so there would be easements placed around there. And it would be sized accordingly for both both lots. Other utilities such as water and sanitary would not necessarily be, we wouldn't be sharing those utilities. Each lot would have their own service line, and I think that would be a requirement. It is of most jurisdictions, and I'm sure that Dublin isn't any different.
Okay, I appreciate that. It was one of the concerns and just know that that would still be the case. I'm assuming that even though we have 100-foot electric easement, that I'm sure you wouldn't put the the underground stormwaters there unless it was allowed. And I'm assuming it is allowed underneath that easement. Is that correct, staff?
If I could jump in there, we are actually working with AEP. Right now, they they're in the process of updating their easement language. We have presented them with our concept and we have told them what, we've shown them what we're looking to do with the underground detention inside the easement. They provided those preliminary locations of a pole so that we can avoid that. The one thing that they would not allow would be above-ground detention in their easement. And we're still, we're still going back and forth with the underground system. If if they're, they come back and they will not allow the underground system in the easement, we do have alternates that would be able to fit that in elsewhere on our side outside of the easement.
Okay, I guess that was a big question because we we do have to be able to accommodate both parcels. Another question I had was the correct, the connector road, we don't show it on our plans, but on satellite imaging and by visiting the site, there is the correct, the connector road or the new neighborhood road that's going to go in. It terminates obviously at a place where there's a building and you can't take it all the way to Stone Ridge. But there is west, what looks like a driveway or an access road that will take you over to Dublin Center Drive. So I don't know if that access road is a public road or if that's a private road. And and staff maybe could answer this question. If you're going to put in a neighborhood road and you're really looking for vehicle options to go from from, you know, one end of the neighborhood to the other, will this neighborhood road be able to access that east-west access road at all and utilize it? Or is that a private road?
I would probably default to Aaron to answering this. These are conversations we are still having with how this, how we continue that neighborhood street, because you're correct, it does terminate into an existing building. That direct route for the neighborhood road would not be able to go currently, but I would certainly let Aaron finish that off.
Yeah, and Zach's correct. If you look at our our council adopted street grid map, the intention in that area as far as public streets is a north-south street. Now, obviously, you know, in this current configuration, it will take the redevelopment of that parcel just to the south. But as we develop this parcel and any other that have that street grid, our intention is to get those pieces constructed so that as those things develop, they're in place. So so the connection that you're asking about, the east-west at that southern terminus, it would not intend, it's not intended to be a public street, so it doesn't appear on our street grid map. There's nothing that would would cause us to make that be a public street. Now that being said, you know, the further we develop in this this application, as we look at it, if there are access easements and agreements, that could serve as a cross connecting driveway that could give not only access to the existing parcel, but to this new parcel, to the signal there, just to the east of this this site.
Thank you, Mr. Stanford.
So what's the possibility of that, Aaron, that 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 could become the case? I mean, is it a private street right now?
It's it's private property. I would call it a drive aisle. Yeah, and so we'll we'll further investigate the the easement rights that we have in that area. And then we can, we can further refine that as they come forward. It is not a private street. It, I would classify it as a drive aisle.
Okay, it, will it connect? In other words, I guess what I'm saying, will it be curbed so that people don't use it with this connector street? In other words, you know how it is, will people use it as a cut through from the, from this neighborhood street?
Well, I think, I think there would be, and I think it would be a positive thing if we can get it set up so that we have legal access. I think it would be a positive point of connectivity. And part of that reason is because it's a right-in, right-out, even with this new public street. Go westbound on 161, because it would get you access out to the street.
Okay, I I agree. I think it, I think it is a nice connector, because I think it's going to be a long time before the building on the south is going to disappear so that you actually have connectivity. But when I saw that on satellite, that you have existing ability for connectivity to Dublin Center Drive, I think it does exactly what the Bridge Street District intent is on neighborhood streets, is to allow you to do those, you know, to find your way in different avenues. And if there's a way that we can make that work, asking this applicant to put in a public street that goes nowhere makes no sense to me. I mean, it makes sense that it's it's part of the the master plan. But if we have the ability to actually make it functionally useful by by making this little access drive become part of a minor street grid, I think that's a plus, and it would help this particular applicant's use be better suited for ingress and egress. So I'm I'm recommending that we work hard on getting that done there.
Absolutely agree, and it would definitely add value to that public street connection. And as we move past the concept plan, it would, it would definitely be our intention to to get that to operate exactly in the way that you're recommending.
Okay, and then my last question would be about the publicly accessible open space. I'd like to either hear from the applicant or staff as to where you think the possibilities for that is. I like the playground, but that's a private open space. I would like to hear how in the Bridge Street District with public accessible open spaces, you would attempt to even do that. How would you do that?
Before Zach makes that comment, I would like to add to some of the comments that Aaron made. We, since our previous application, we did remove an additional aisle drive that ran east to west along the south side of our part of our lot. And we want to reiterate that that was an intentional decision in order to increase the opportunity for pedestrian circulation around the site and lessen the interaction between pedestrian and vehicle on the site. Right now, we intend for that access drive that splits both lots to be the main vehicular point of access for both lots. We then have designed a circular loop circulation pattern for each, whether it be developed as such on Lot B, but especially for Primrose School. So that the pedestrian path that we are currently proposing be a loop around the perimeter perimeter of the lot. And then it also back to the building on the south that the neighborhood street currently terminates into. When you walk the site, there is an existing path on that south end that may not be fully visible from satellite. But there is a path that we intend to connect to as well on that perimeter loop. And you know, every city is big into their walkability rating right now. So I think we mapped, if I'm not mistaken, we mapped that perimeter loop to be exactly one quarter mile. So we can provide, similarly to how we educate our children on health and fitness within the school, we also see that as a way to connect to the community with health and fitness with that pedestrian ring around that outside. But in order to accomplish that, we must limit vehicular access. And now that's within our lot. We understand that the city has a different intention with the neighborhood street connecting and creating blocks and access, and that's completely fine, and we support that. But as it relates to our intention as a client and operator, we want to limit the interaction of pedestrian and vehicle on both lots. As for the open space, we do have a layer that it will be further illustrated on the next stage of the process that will show nodes of stopping points along this pedestrian path. We don't want to, let me digress, we have to be very careful with the program limitations of a daycare facility and public access. So any amenity that we offer will be on the backside of the lot away from the playground and away from classroom windows. So we have considered planters, we have considered tall grasses. We called it a street wall at one point in conversation. We have considered all of those things, but when it comes to open space, we need to be very clear that protecting our children is very high as a priority. And in every other primrose school in the nation, we have a perimeter fence that also goes across the front of our building for this reason. We understand that we cannot have that in in the district, and we are fully compliant. But as a response to that, our public amenities need to stay in line with the goal of protecting our children.
I appreciate that. I I think there's a challenge there in that the Bridge Street District is supposed to bring vitality and walkability into these places. And your your need to protect the children from strangers or or people coming in could be at odds with that, so you're going to have to be imaginative on on these spaces, so I I don't know.
We are prepared. We have done research and and design charrettes that are not currently illustrated at this stage of the process. To to dump all of that on the plan now would be distracting. So but we are prepared to work with staff to illustrate the the methods that we've talked to with brand, as well as client, as well as industry professionals. And we feel we can accomplish that, but it's not going to be, it's going to be limited in specific areas, i.e. next to a window and next to a place that a an adult can loiter. It does not mean that it's going to be entirely removed from Lot A and only on Lot B. There's just, there will be very specific strategies that we execute and we'll need to work hand-in-hand with staff to make that happen.
I could interject just a little bit. This is Ehab Scander. My wife is the franchise owner and we have five schools, and this would be our sixth one. And we have challenging locations like in the Grandview area in the, close to the yard. And we have one that's in downtown Columbus. And we've managed to make it a little bit, you know, a good balance so that we can protect our kids, but still have a little bit of privacy. And we found ways to also keep our, you know, staff when they're on break or when they're trying to just take a minute, because working with, you know, two-year-olds for eight hours a day is taxing sometimes, and you need a mental break. So we we have opportunities there, and with the artist illustrations that you have in front of you, there are some planters and benches along the front, along the neighborhood street that are kind of small, but you know, they're visible a little bit. And we have an even bigger opportunity in the in the easement where the power line is, which we have to keep clear anyway. So it's, we definitely care about the feel and the fit in the neighborhood. And then the one other thing I want to mention, just for the record, is there was a name change. It's now the Primrose School of Dublin Riverside, just to avoid confusion between the Bridge Park developers and us not being part of it. So I just want to make sure that that's stated for the record as as well.
Ms. Fox, did you have any other questions?
No, those were, those were my questions. Thank you very much.
Looking to the rest of the commission, do you have any questions for either the applicant or staff at this time?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman.
So I I'm concerned that these issues are ironed out as we get through the the process. And the the access and transportation for both lots, I think, should be handled before we approve this, this one parcel. So I I think that's going to be very important, because I think it's going to be complicated, and I appreciate what the applicant's saying as far as safety of the kids and so on. So I think it's important when when, before this is approved, that's all ironed out.
And Mr. Fishman, luckily, at the at the concept plan, we're only looking really at seven criteria and the
I'm just saying that
that we're looking at are encompassed in four of those. So there are issues with four of these items as we move forward that will need to be addressed before this, this really moves forward.
I realize that.
Questions, thank you, Mr. Fishman. Any questions from the rest of the commission for either applicant or staff? Yeah, I just have one. So Zach, looking to you with stormwater and open space. Again, looking forward thinking, because we are looking at two separate parcels, one of which has imminent development possibilities. The other one may not. If we were treating the parcel, the southern parcel, or I guess that it's the southern parcel, independent of the northern parcel, would it meet the criteria for open space in and of itself?
In terms of the permitted open space they'd required to provide? Or are you saying lot coverage?
Uh, open space.
Open space. So they would be required, I think it was 300 square feet of open space. With the way that it's set up currently, it would be incredibly tight to fit that. And it will probably be more oriented towards the rear of the building, just with what they're showing in terms of addressing permitted open space types. Something internally that we've talked about in the past is that there's certainly opportunities when these both develop that they could consolidate open spaces to the frontage of West Dublin Granville Road. And basically, it'd be a considerative fee, or they consider a fee with that as well, which could make that certainly a possibility here. And I think that, at least from staff's perspective, having that open space along that principal frontage would make more sense than this kind of neighborhood street. So there's certainly opportunity here, whether it is along that that neighborhood street to the rear of the Primrose Building, and also considering the sensitive nature of of a daycare. Of a daycare, but also leaning more towards. Um how do we bolster the principal front and street and kind of close in some gaps? So there's certainly opportunity across the board to be creative with it. Um and it's. I I think it's a good thing to consider at this stage so that when we move forward, these considerations are made and. They're accounted for when we get to preliminary development plan.
Thank you, Mr. Henshaw. I'll have additional comments on that item when we get to the comment period. Um but but thank you for the clarification. Mr. Suplack.
Zach, a sort of follow up question on in that regard. Um. Is there any reason the open space can't be in the electrical easement?
So it depends on what the. What the language is within the easement. Something you'll see with a future application with the with Chase Bank. They were able to locate their open space type in the electrical easement that runs along the front of their property. Um that's basically because it's no permanent. It's not really, there's no foundation required with that. So it really depends what the language is gonna be. If the language permits something that doesn't require a foundation, it's certainly possible to do it. Um especially when you look at the layout of this lot, something in that easement along West Dublin Granville could fill that gap.
Got it. Okay. And and I I have full faith, Alina. I have full faith that they could design if they understood those parameters could design into it, but. Just just so we're all hearing it, three hundred square feet is. In that easement right now and I, you know, I mean, like, it's not that it's two parking spaces is what it amounts to. So I think it's very, very doable. As we continue to sort of cultivate this project.
And I can confirm that we've done that research and that easement, that AEP easement is exactly as Zach identified. Or defined it. Um as long as we do not have a foundation in that easement, we can have open space. Within the easement. And I will also say which we will be able to. Clearly identify in the parking plan that is required in the next step. We exceed the required number of parking spaces right now for both lots. So. Though there may be doubt as it relates to the open space, we as a team. Do not feel we will have an issue meeting that for either lot A or lot B.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. All right. Any other questions at this point before we turn it over to discussion? All right, Mr. Suplack, do you want to kick us off?
Um I I'm generally supportive. O- obviously, um I I think. The there are a few sort of critical sticking points on this, right? Um cart before the horse, I think I think Warren was touching on it at some point. And obviously, I'm I'm gonna defer to Claudia and uh and Aaron and Jenny and all that that. These are sequenced in the appropriate manner, so we don't sort of paint ourselves in a corner and approve something before. The right easements are written and that type of thing. Um the other thing I I was gonna sort of piggyback on. With Aaron and maybe this is just more a comment than anything else. Um those other two parcels. How about that that private street that potentially is going to become now a connector street on the minor grid, uh that will obviously improve the quality of those two parcels. That it's adjacent to um right now. I think, you know, one of them is GFS and the only way you get in is through that back access point. So to have, there is merit to them even being motivated to to make this connection. And of course, that makes this street work. Um I I applaud uh Alina and and team. I applaud the effort to sort of. Uh you know, let's let's agree, we were uncomfortable with the um the north lot in particular and its viability. As it was previously just quickly sketched. I think you guys have demonstrated, you know, I mean, that it it can and will work. Um I I, you know, even go into the your parking count, I I already penciled in a handful more parking spaces without even trying. I know you're conscious of that too. If the if the certain you should sort of push that that envelope. So I I applaud the the effort there to demonstrate that that parcel can. And will work for us. Um the architecture is, the architecture is handsome. Uh the materials are agreeable. Um but you know, I I'm fond of and have respect for Primrose. I'm happy to have another one in the city.
Thank you, Mr. Suplack. Mr. Schneer, do you want to go next?
Uh thank you. Actually, that's a good timing because I echo Mr. Suplack's uh comments. Uh the only thing I would add, uh if the applicant is comfortable with. The the conditions and comfortable that they'll work these things out uh with the staff before coming back.
Thank you, Mr. Schneer. Ms. Kennedy.
Thank you, Ms. Call. Um yes, ditto to the previous comments. I think the proposed character of this building is. Really quite nice, especially for a daycare, given the um. The number of windows on that front front face. I think it's a beautiful building and it looks. Unlike a traditional daycare, which is very appealing and it seems to match the character of the surrounding Bridge Park, which is kind of cool and. Um trendy. So I I I really am pleased with how the renderings have come along. Um I I'll echo Mr. Suplack on the green space. Um we don't want to see seas of parking lots and and asphalt in Dublin. We love to see the green space. So um over uh and overabundance of parking is not necessarily something that this commission tends to. Um agree with. So I look forward to the reiteration of um of that in the next phase. So thank you so much for your application.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Mr. Fishman.
Yes, again, I say ditto to my previous um colleagues. Um I but I am anxious to see the complete transportation plan um uh for both parcels. Uh before we get through the process.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Mr. Grimes.
Thank you for being so responsive to the previous um instructive criticism on the project. I think that the uh. The layout and and the look and the feel of it and the building changes make it a far better project. And I I'm sure with the nine conditions, there's still a lot of work to to go forward. Uh and taking in all the comments of this evening, I know it's going to be a a great project. I look forward to uh coming to the next phase. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Ms. Fox.
Um I also think you. Some really nice revisions. I would make a couple of suggestions as you move forward. And I think you're already leaning in this direction from your earlier comments. Um the fact that you have. Frontage on this new neighborhood street. And you have a shared access coming in, you have the opportunity, obviously, to make that a very attractive little. Little place for your for your folks who come in with their kids to pull in front there, park. Run in and get their kids and to enhance, as you bring the preliminary back, to enhance that frontage, which gives a little street comfort. And design style is is would be a nice touch there, especially if you get that little neighborhood. Um access road to go the other direction. You you kind of have this nice little entrance and exit. And and it it would really be an asset to the Bridge Street District neighborhood there. Whenever we ever get even more on the south side done. Um as for um. Your three hundred square foot of of uh open space, it isn't very much as as uh. As Mark mentioned, it's only two spaces. But as I look at um partial B. Um and I look at what the impact of that building potentially in the future will do. And that space there where the one hundred foot easement is, I'd really like to see an agreement with shared parking. And you utilize the parking more towards the back and bring that green space and that. Um kind of nice design feel towards the front of the street where people, when they walk down the street. They actually get an image of of a nice public space. If you can come to an agreement where those two. Maybe share that instead of a street wall, which would have to, which would have to camouflage the parking. It becomes a street pocket park that actually is much more inviting than a street wall would be to to enhance that. I think that would be a nice. Nice way because you have great. Private green space back there with your um your 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 shaded areas for the kids. And if you want the privacy, then maybe that that shared agreement might bring more um advantage to the Bridge Street. Frontage on one sixty one than you'll ever be able to achieve by spraying that all over your partial. It's just not, it's just a thought, you know? So other than that, I think um. I think the the connectivity uh of the sidewalks, I noted it, I actually marked it up here. I think. It will create some nice energy for people to walk around the area. So I like all of those things and. And I I think you've done a nice job of making those adjustments and I I compliment you on that.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Uh so rounding us out, uh I just want to concentrate on a couple of. Uh significant positives. Thank you for listening to the feedback from the commission the last time you came before us, the tower removal. Uh the street alignment, the property line, you know, straightening that out and making it more of a viable property line and project going forward. Uh we are going to be sensitive as this application proceeds. We are going to be sensitive to the street alignments, to the pedestrian connectivity. To the open space, but specifically, I invite you to investigate and really dig down into that Bridge Street District code. To really read the intent of the city council in what it's inviting us to do to engage in that area. This is one of the, one of the items that Dublin has embraced is we are a little unique and we like that uniqueness. And so uh I would invite you to dig down into that. Uh I don't know how many meetings I've been into in when we've talked to art, we've talked to open space, we've got to. Talked to picnic areas, to benches along paths, to all of those types of things. So that is going to be something that. The entire commission will be sensitive to as we progress. Uh but again, I want to compliment. You on uh taking the feedback and incorporating this into a more viable project and and. More beautiful project moving forward. Uh my final comment would be I. We always like it when applications have zero, you know, conditions on them because that means that everything was met. Uh very rarely do we get zero conditions. Usually we'll have one, two or three. But in the case where we're looking at two parcels. Uh that have kind of this shared relationship between them. Uh I would be fully in favor of looking at a a little bit of a different approach when it comes to that open space. We heard Zach talk earlier about the Dublin Granville Corridor. And so some type of, we never want to say, okay, well, you don't have to meet open space because in the future, we're gonna make your neighbor do it. Because that's not equitable. But I would be wholeheartedly in favor of something along the lines of the back parcel bonds. For a portion of open space. And then the city retains that bond and and incorporates that into the future development of the front side. And if the front side never develops, the city has that bond and can come in and put some nice greenery or whatever along the street corridor anyway. So I don't want to kind of squeeze this into a corner and say, okay, well, you're a completely separate parcel, therefore you have to meet your open space. You have to, you have to, you have to. Because that's what the code reads as, but we do have a little bit of flexibility when we look at bonding opportunities to make sure that. You know, we we touched on the streets and we don't like streets that go nowhere, but we have a long term vision. So yes, we want to put this portion of the street in. Because eventually everyone else is going to have to put their portion of the street in. That's how we get roads that actually connect. Everyone, we're only responsible for doing their own driveway, well, we'd all be driving across grass. Out west, we'd all be driving across uh across dirt, but luckily we have water out here in Ohio. So uh a- again, we are looking at a a really beautiful project and we look forward to Primrose School coming even. Even closer to fruition. So thank you very much for your time this evening. Uh are we looking, so it looks like I am looking to approve the concept plan. There are nine conditions on the staff report. Do I have a motion from the commission?
We'll move.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Schneer, I saw your hand go up first. Ms. Beal.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Mr. Suplack?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Mr. Schneer?
Yeah.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. We look forward to seeing you again relatively soon. So thank you and stay healthy.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh next case up is number four, case two zero one one nine CP, address four zero one two West Dublin Granville Road. Concept plan. This application is a request for the construction of a two story, eleven thousand square foot multi-tenant building. For restaurant and medical office. The site is northeast of the intersection of West Dublin Granville Road and David Road. And Zone Bridge Street District Office. Claudia, looks like you have our case presentation tonight.
I do. I am filling in for Chase, who is out of the office and um he is the case manager. And has been uh working with the applicants throughout this. Um fruition of this particular application, but I am trying to fill in to the best of my ability. Um based on your introduction, this is um also a uh concept plan application. And since Zach went into the detail for what that means in the Bridge Street District, I'll skip over this slide because you just had seen this. Um the location of this is actually um Catty Corner from the Primrose site that we had just talked about. So it is um on the north side of West Dublin Granville Road. And um has on the north side also frontage on Banker Drive, which is a public street. And then um David Road is just to the west. Um it consists of two parcels currently and the eastern portion, so the eastern parcel. Has a a heavily wooded tree stand there on. On that portion and the uh western parcel is vacant of any kind of vegetation. Uh here are some pictures of the site as it currently exists. I should have mentioned earlier as well that on the east side that. Um AEP power line easement is also um existing on this parcel or touching this parcel. Um as we had just talked about for Primrose. Um the site has no impacts in terms of needed infrastructure, in terms of streets as it is connected on all this. On those three sides that I just mentioned. Um so the street network map. In this particular instance is um already taken care of um what the site is being um served by. All the public streets that would be required within the system of the um of the district. And then the proposal is, as you had mentioned, for eleven thousand square feet of building. Um it is a commercial building type which the applicant has identified as a loft building. Which is permitted in the office district and also is permitted um in this particular district to have office. And uh restaurant. So it is um accommodating a mix of uses. Um and like I said, the applicant has identified um the building type as a loft. Uh building and has cited the building to meet the requirements for setbacks. Um one of the things that we have uh requested the applicant to take another look at is parking. So they are proposing currently fifty three parking spaces. Based on our calculation, they would be required to have fifty eight. So there might be an opportunity to have additional parking spaces, particularly in this. Uh what is identified on the site plan as the natural drainage area, which would have to be underground. Anyways, based on what we just talked about with Primrose as well. And um there is certainly opportunity to add additional parking. If if um needed. Um there is an open space identified on the plan, which is um here on the um elevation drawing. You can see it. It's right at the corner of David Road. And uh West Dublin Granville or one sixty one. Um and again, we would work with the applicant um at the next step, which would be the preliminary development plan. To um to finalize those details. Um the requirement on in this particular area. Of the city would be for a two story building. The applicant is um proposing largely a one story building. But a uh one story building with very tall uh floor to ceiling heights. Um however, that would um likely require a waiver in the future if indeed it is not too occupiable um stories. Um and here are some views of how the applicant has addressed um. Sort of that variation in where the um where the roof is not just a single flat story, but there is. Uh variation incorporated. Uh one thing to point out to is there is a covered rooftop patio that is part of this proposal. And then um here are some of the inspiration images that the applicant has provided. So on the left. So on the left is a completed project within, within the BSD, which is the Penn Zone Building at Village Parkway. So that is also one of those buildings that was required to be a two-story, but received a waiver for a tall one-story. And they've created a mezzanine and a very successful architectural address of, of that one-story, even though it is tall and meets the intent of the code as we would foresee it. And then on the left are some other images of what the materials might be, metal, glass, wood siding. And I'll let Russ talk about that a little bit more since he is probably better versed in architecture than I am. And then some open space imagery here as well. On the top right is the open space at State Bank, which is near this particular site. And then other inspirational images that could be implemented in that space that I had shown you here. With that, we are recommending approval. We have six conditions. Discussing the stormwater, like I had mentioned, the parking, the building height, and landscaping and the open space. So with that, I know Russ is here from Crawford-Hoeyng to help answer any questions or fill in any blanks that I may have left out of this presentation.
Thank you, Claudia. And Russ, do you have a presentation or would like to say anything before we go to questions from the commission?
Not really a presentation per se. She, Claudia always does a good job of taking everything and putting into what, what we've got there. What I will, I will offer is if you, if, can you go back to that, that first sort of aerial massing that has the corner of 161 and David?
Yes.
It's sort of the easiest way to see everything, I think. So, so in this case, we are working with a, sort of, it's a medical office tenant that would take that 7,000-square-foot office portion of this. That, that tenant is already in hand and we're working directly with them. So the reason why we wanted to complete the street, so we wanted the building to, to cover the frontage along 161, which is why we've extended it to the east like that. That 4,000-square-foot restaurant tenant, we've got it as a restaurant tenant, thinking that's worst-case scenario at this point, really as we're, as we're calculating our parking, as we're trying to figure out exactly how everything's going to fit on the site. So I would say that everything that you see sort of to the left of the picture is probably slightly more baked than everything to the right to the picture. What we know is that the medical office tenant that we're working with really wants this covered rooftop patio in order to do events up there. So, and he really wanted it to be on that corner and engaging with the open space. So those pieces fell into place pretty quickly. At that point, we knew that if we're going to have the rooftop patio, then obviously we've got to get elevators and stairs. And so we're going to have that two-story mass along the corner, which is why we thought it made a whole lot of sense to, to step these, these rooftops back, these, these roof planes back as we go towards the east. You know, at that point, the other thing that that really helps us with is obviously as we get this thing up, we know that, that in this district, we're supposed to have a two-story building. We also know that if there were two stories here, we, we probably couldn't park them. We're already having a hard time parking them as it, as it is. So, so trying to pull these parapet heights and these, and these story heights up as much as we can in order to meet at least the, you know, the intent of the code. But, but beyond that, you know, it's really building in the front, parking in the back. It's, it's one of those sites that we've got an electric easement to the east and a storm easement to the west and a gas easement to the south. Kind of puts the building, the site is kind of putting the building where it wants. We almost aren't doing a whole heck of a lot of work there. But beyond that, you know, really that's it. It's a fairly simple concept at this point.
Thank you, Russ. All right, looking to the commission for questions for staff and applicant at this point. Mr. Suplack.
Russ just kind of touched on it relative to the one-story, two-story, right? Don't get me wrong. That was on my line of questions to begin with. I, I guess I'm going, looking at Claudia, the calculation that they are currently under, is that calculated against a restaurant, like he said, sort of the worst-case scenario? The 58?
Yeah.
Got it.
Yeah, it would be.
Any other questions from the commission, Ms. Fox?
I do, and I, and I think it's important that, that I ask it and also make a statement about this. When we were looking at the revisions to the Bridge Street Code, one of the things that I, I think is important to reiterate to the commission and also to have Claudia enforce is that I know that waivers are something that we look at as not, not an attractive thing to do, but in the Bridge Street area, as we discussed this, the ability to change in order to get the best architectural feel or the best design was one of the things that got brought up quite often. And even though we may say that we need two stories on here, the trade-off would be that the massing, the design, the advantage of the, the use, the aesthetic from the street, the vitality it provides, the unique architecture, all those things are reasons to allow you not to meet the letter of the law and the ordinance. And, and Claudia, I would like you to at least kind of speak to the fact that in the Bridge Street District, we're actually looking for intent and objective more than we are looking for square and a lot of transparency. I mean, it's really kind of, that's the direction we kind of want to lean towards.
Definitely. And that's really also why we, in the very beginning of creating the code, have included that waiver provision. Because the only other way you would look at it is a variance and that's not what we wanted. We wanted this to be part of the commission's review. And hence, that waiver word and, and criteria came about to allow applicants to be more creative and to be more innovative and maybe not meet every single number or every single letter. But, you know, it's one of those things where we always talked about the AC Marriott is probably one of the ones that has the most waivers we've ever had. But you know it when you see it, right? It is one of the more successful innovative things that we have seen in the city. So it's, it's not intended to be a bad word, I guess, a waiver.
Where I was going with that, because, because Russ, I want to say that when I saw these inspirational images, if you're going to give that kind of eye candy to us, then you better deliver that kind of eye candy. That's great eye candy right there. And that's exactly the kind of thing that we want to see happen. And I would not want to, I personally would not want to hold you to a two-story building when you're going to give us a one, a one and a half, a two, transparencies, great canopies, rooftop dining, great corner vitality, you know, pocket park images with natural, all those things are what we're looking for, right? And I, I'm anxious to kind of have a discussion about this because, you know, if you hook us with that, then the preliminary plan better come back looking like that. So that's, that, that's the thing I wanted to throw out there. Waivers are not bad things if they give you the kind of architectural vibrancy that these, these inspirational images do give you.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Any other questions from the commission? All right, looking to, yes, Mr. Snare.
Now I'm a bit, a bit confused on the uses and obviously not bound by this, but the rooftop patio is, is part of, would be part of the medical office tenant and not the restaurant. Is that the understanding?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. So it's, I mean, without getting into too much detail, it's a, it's a medical office tenant that will have a retail use. I'm sure you can read between the lines to kind of figure out what that might be. Higher end, and actually going back to some of what Ms. Fox was saying, that those particular inspirational images, especially the architecture, were specifically from that tenant. That they've, they've got a pretty specific idea in mind for what they want their, the building to look like. But yes, that, that is intended to be an event space for the medical office tenant.
So, Mr. Hunter, I think you can read between the lines and hear that the commission wouldn't be opposed to having a restaurant use with also that kind of canopy patio, rooftop dining area. I think Mr. Snare is laughing at me right now because I go there.
I'd like to say I, I very much like the design. I'm just a tad disappointed in the
All right, moving on to discussion. So looking for discussion on this concept plan. I think that Jane kicked us off rather well in discussing letter of the law versus spirit of the law when it comes to the Bridge Street District Code. So Mr. Suplack, do you want to?
I second Jane.
Fantastic. Mr. Grimes?
Yeah, I think it's a wonderful project. I know that, as mentioned, with all those easements around there, you're getting very creative to try to find the best use for this property. And as we fill in this corridor, I'm certainly looking forward to this project going to the next step. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Ms. Kennedy?
Thank you, Ms. Call. I'm really excited about this project as well. Whenever I drive by Penn Zone, you know, it's a beautiful building. So I'm glad that it's one of inspirations for this. And I'm really happy that Ms. Fox brought up, and also Claudia, on the intent and objective. And really, that's the key here. It's, it's not necessarily meeting the letter of the two-story building, but making it a cool space and inviting. And I just, I'm really drawn to these inspirational images, the green space, the seating. Yeah, I don't have anything negative to say. I don't know if there are specific things that you were looking for at this phase, but I'm really pleased with what you've presented to us so far. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Mr. Snare?
I, I just reiterate, I am more comfortable that the tenant that you have is the one that wants the, the rooftop because that makes me more comfortable in a waiver for not two-story. Because I think that's what makes the difference, at least to me, in not, in it not being a two-story.
Thank you, Mr. Snare. Ms. Fox?
So, so Russ, I have some questions. If you are thinking about restaurant space, are you thinking about on the east side then? Where, where is restaurant space if you're going to get it?
So if, if you look at that, again, kind of going back to that, that corner view, it's, it is the space to the east. So, so basically, if you see that two-story pop-up and then there's a middle section, that middle section is still a part of the medical office tenant. So it's the section to the east. It's, right now, it is literally just shown as a box. It, it probably needs the most, it'll need the most focus as we move forward on, on exactly what that's going to look like, where if, again, if there's outdoor dining, where that's going to be. There's a little bit of a question mark in my mind as well because you may have talked about this in the previous, but you know, AEP is going through there and putting monopoles through that easement. So the easement's actually growing a little bit within our site. What I don't have a great understanding of is what's going to happen or if they're going to go in and they're going to cut out all of that existing vegetation underneath and what's going to happen as a result of that. So there's still some homework, I think, that we're going to have to do relative to what ADP is going to do. And that's going to affect, as an example, where you would want a, if there's going to be outdoor dining, where it's going to want to be.
So is it possible, because you've got such great movement of mass on the west side and you've got that open space, which isn't a lot, it's, it's kind of small, right? But it's a private use anyway, and it's not like people are going to actually get a chance to use it. Is it possible that that one-story mass could shift to the north and give you street front so that you're not getting into the east easement? Because I got excited when I saw, especially the inspirational images. But, you know, it's a private use. You're going to want to go there. So you've got the opportunity, you've already invited people to this, to the partial because of that great private imagery that the medical center, that medical office is gaining for itself. But as you walk down the street, that one-story building that is so close to the street, I would be for allowing that to be pushed back, allowing that setback waiver and getting the same kind of energy on the street front with outdoor dining or outdoor, something where the trans, what I loved about this transparency that they're asking you to give them is that you see all that energy inside. It flows right outside. When you drive by, you see it. And if you could create that same kind of transparency on that one-story, whereas people drive by, you're seeing people eating and you're, you're watching some sort of outside dining on the street or even towards the, I don't know what's going to happen with that AEP easement. If you get that all cut down, it's going to be bad, but.
Yeah.
And then the natural drainage area, I know that they're going to force you to put that underground in order to pick up some spaces, but is it possible? I'm just looking at the walkability, David, Banker, down 161. Now we've got something that might happen across the street. We've got Chase Bank that's going to be on the other side of, of, you know, we're, we're going to see some energy on Banker Drive. Is it possible that your open space areas or, so additional stuff could happen with a water feature or, or something on that corner that makes that kind of interesting to make the pedestrian walk? Is there something you can do, a little imaginative there?
I, I mean, anything's, anything's possible. Obviously, we haven't, we haven't designed it yet. I think, I think the intention is to do something that is substantial enough that it can be experienced from the rooftop. And I don't know exactly what that means. It could mean more lush plantings, could mean taller plantings, could be a taller tree, or it could mean some sort of water feature. I mean, I, I certainly wouldn't be opposed to it as early on as we are in the process. Yeah, I hate to say that that's exactly the thing we do because there might be some sort of aha moment. But I, I don't think that's out of the realm of possibilities.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I, we're trying really hard here to, to look holistically at what the public realm experience is as you make these street connections, as we start walking. Because we haven't had enough of it to see what it feels like, but now they're starting to fill in. So I just ask you to think about what that one-story mass will do to 161, how you can create the same amount of energy you're getting on that west corner, because that looks great. How can we kind of create that same kind of energy on that, or on that front edge? And then as you take the walk along Banker Drive and David Road as we start to get up, what are you doing to enhance that public realm experience on these corners?
So just so I can make sure that I understand, what you are, what you are asking for is the 4,000-square-foot restaurant to shift north away from 161, enough to create some sort of outdoor space between it and the road?
Wouldn't that be nice? I mean, I don't know. That's my opinion. I don't know.
Okay, no, I just want to make sure I was understanding. I think that, I, I certainly think that if this, if the storm goes underground, that's possible. Because what I, what I know is, is that that parking lot's going to be 120 feet. It's going to be two bays. So we, we know that if that is able to shift to the north, that we're going to have, we're going to have more flexibility, which is, which is great.
I'd say with what you've brought so far, have some fun and get some energy on 161 and then think about what the Banker Drive-David Road corner could do for the public realm. Just play around with that.
Yep. Thank you.
So, Mr. Hunter, I think you'll hear from all of us that, that we're excited with the inspirational images. We do love our wow factors. We love the, you know, really engaging, embracing who we are in Dublin and, you know, stepping up even who we are right now. Us challenge ourselves and essentially we want your building to be the next include, the next, the next application. We want them to look at yours and maybe even take a step up from that as you're doing from the Penn Zone Building.
Hey Rebecca, you're frozen.
Yes, I'm back.
Okay.
So I don't know how much of that you heard. Essentially, we're looking for that wow factor and really we're looking for the next applicant to use your building as the inspirational images for them, to take yours and say, hey, this is who to take yours and say, hey, this is who I wanna be, and maybe even step it up a little bit from there. So I think you'll hear consensus now how you go about including that. You know, you do have more flexibility if that stormwater management goes underground. You know, water features are great, but we're, we're not going to give you, this is what we must have, but we like the direction you're going, and we do wanna challenge your thinking to Jane's point just a moment ago. Think outside of the box. We like that new, fresh idea. We don't want to lock you into, just like with the two-story building, i- if you give us a little bit more in one area, then there could be trade-offs. So all in all, it looks like a fantastic application, and we're very, very much looking forward to seeing what comes next. Mr. Fishman? You're muted.
Okay, I I I think there's waivers and there's waivers, and I have no problem with with the one-story and the step, the way they've stepped it down. I think that's pretty exciting. I I was gonna make the same comment that was made about pushing the building back, because I don't think we should think about a restaurant today, from what we've seen in the last three or four months, about ground floor outside dining. And I think that that adds tremendous energy to to 161. So I would really agree for that. And and as I said, there's waivers and waivers, you know, we 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 see positive things that in a waiver, and we see something spectacular. I'm very for them. In my experience, I've been kind of negative on waivers, but I think that in this case, I think that creativity is gonna be number one.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Staff, has any public comment been received on this item?
No, we have not gotten any public comment on any of our cases tonight, actually.
All right, thank you, Ms. Husek. All right, at this point in time, I, Jane, did you have one more thing? You're muted, Jane.
We are gonna get ready to vote on the recommendation, and I and I wanna ask staff before we do that, on recommendation number two, on the on the conditions, we're asking them to provide a street wall with landscaping along David Road. And I just made them mention that I'd, I'd really like to see them get creative. So I don't, I don't know that we need to force them into a street wall with landscaping. And then on number four, that what that they are, to ensure the intent of the Bridge Street Code is met with regards to minimum building height requirements. Well, if we're giving a lot of leeway, then do we really have to to go with that as a condition? Since we're allowing some leeway here. So I'd like Claudia to answer my, you know, my question on that.
Yeah, I mean, we could certainly delete number four if you are comfortable with the applicant being able to to use architecture to offset the the building height requirement.
Claudia, correct me if I'm wrong, but it it says to ensure the intent of the BSD Code is met with regards to minimum building height requirements, since the intent is waivers are eligible if intent is met. I I don't know that we need to strike number four. Is that the way that you read that as well?
I will, yes, actually, that is, that's a very good point, that the word intent is is here the emphasis.
And then Claudia, on number two, can you clarify the requirement? Why was staff requiring the street wall?
It has to do with, and this site is, it's difficult in terms of it having so many street frontages. With the building sitting where it is, it would require to be, to have more building frontage on that David Road side. So one of the ways that they could do that is with a street wall.
Can 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 we alter number two to instead, to provide? To to investigate providing, that gives us flexibility at the next step to either say, yes, it's going to happen, or no, it's not, but it it keeps it in there for consideration. But at the same time, you know, we want staff to have the flexibility as to if you're requiring this for a specific set of reasons, continue to maybe think outside of the box, but at the same time, not walk the applicant into providing that street wall. Jane, does that meet your?
Yeah, I do. I want them to have an opportunity. We know that a street wall is required by code. We can always apply it. I just don't wanna force it when they have the opportunity to be creative with their partial. So I would just assume remove it, because we can always apply it. I mean, it's in the code to apply, but I I have to force it.
Can you see this also? I I, I mean, I can delete it. I'm fine either way. I said that the applicant coordinate with staff and investigate ways to address the street wall requirement along David Road.
Perfect. I think that that meets the concern and the criteria. Any other questions, callouts from the commission? Then at this time, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Beal?
Mr. Supalak?
Yes.
Mr. Sner? Mr. Sner?
Mr. Sner, we didn't hear you.
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. All right, well, Russ, we look forward to a fantastic project. I know that you have work cut out for you on both the tenant side of things and the the application and progress of this particular plan. So thank you very much for your diligence, and thank you for spending your evening with us.
Thanks. See you soon.
All right. So we have case number six now, Chase Bank, and case number seven, Chase Bank, located at 6515 Sawmill Road. Case number 20-106, PDP, FDP, CUWR, Preliminary and Final Development Plans, Conditional Use Waivers, and case number 20-107, MSP, Master Sign Plan. So we have two cases on tonight's agenda, both involving the construction of an approximately 4,100 square foot one-story bank with a drive-through ATM on 0.85 acre site. The first application is a request for review and approval of preliminary and final development plans with a parking plan, a conditional use, and two waivers. The second application is for a master sign plan that includes three wall signs and a window sign. The site is northwest at the intersection of Sawmill Road with Banker Drive and Zone Bridge Street District, Sawmill Center Neighborhood. We will hear both cases together tonight, and Mr. Hunchell, is this one yours?
It is indeed. Thank you very much, Mound Chair. Good evening. This is two applications for the development located on the site. This is a request for review and approval for a preliminary development plan, final development plan, conditional use, and also a master sign plan. Just so you can visualize the approvals that will be required tonight. Case 20-106 will include the approval of two waivers. It'll also include the approval of the preliminary and final development plan with the parking plan included in the final development plan and the conditional use. In case 20-0 or 107 will just be the master sign plan approval. In May of 2020, this application did receive approval for a concept plan. So the applicant is at the stage where a preliminary development plan would typically be required. In rare cases, the planning director has the ability to combine both the preliminary and final development plan based on the application and the scenario of the application. For this application specifically, the planning director has granted them the ability to combine both their preliminary and final development plans, which will be receiving potential approval today. This site is highlighted in yellow on the screen. It is located at the northwest corner of Sawmill Road and Banker Drive. It is zoned within the Bridge Street District, Sawmill Center Neighborhood. And here is a zoomed-in look at the site. You can see that it is currently developed. It was originally a Boston Market building. However, it does sit vacant currently. The applicant will be redeveloping the entirety of the site. Showing the screen are some existing conditions. Most of these photos you have seen before with the concept plan. We did add one photo, just to give you reference of what is south of the site with the piata location as they have this outdoor seating area and patio area that is located at the corner of their intersection. And you can also see the existing conditions of the drive from Baker as it aligns with the piata access and also the existing Boston Market building on the right photo. So as you've seen with other applications, this is the street network grid for the Bridge Street District. This site sits at the intersection of Sawmill Road and Banker Drive. No improvements will be necessary for the the roadways for for this site. It does sit on a principal front and street, which would be Sawmill Road. Principal front and streets are designed to ensure that certain street types are aligned with continuous pedestrian-oriented block spacing with the fronts, building facades. And it's the limited conflicts also between pedestrian spaces and vehicular access spaces. With this site being located within the Sawmill Center Neighborhood, there are specific neighborhood requirements and standards that this site would have to meet. Within the black box that is zoomed in, you will see the exact location of this site. This site is located where a potential gateway location is oriented on this map. This was a consideration at the concept plan in May where the commission discussed the possibility of improving the site to include a gateway location, which we will touch on later in this presentation. As shown on the screen, the left photo would be what was previously approved with the concept plan, and the right photo is what is currently proposed with the final development plan. There are a few changes that have been made to the site, which you can see are highlighted, both in orange and red. In orange, you will see that from the concept plan, the applicant has relocated the open space type south of the building. What this does is it move the, it moved the Chase Building to the north to allow for more space to put the Pocket Plaza at the intersection of Sawmill and Banker to better encapsulate the gateway feature for this site. The applicant has also worked with planning staff to realign the southern full access, vehicular access with the access that is found on Piata to the south, to the south. These access roads do align better now with what is being proposed and what is currently there. The applicant is also proposing a parking plan, which will be considered with the final development plan. With a bank use and the size of their building, they are required by code to provide between 11 and 14 parking spaces for their site. They are requesting 30 parking spaces due to the consolidation of multiple branches within the area to the site and also the model that Chase Bank is locating on the site as it is more oriented towards customers being able to come in and utilize their facility. Also with this application, the applicant is proposing a conditional use for a drive-through ATM, which is located along the western portion of the site. It is a, has a canopy with two ATM drive-through, drive-throughs, and also just an access road to the outside of it. Each of the ATMs have four stacking spaces each, and there is also a required screening wall to the south of the ATM to screen any headlights from incoming vehicles that are utilizing the ATM services. They are proposing the screening wall at three feet, six inches in height. This is six inches taller than what is required by code. So planning staff is recommending that they revise the design of the street wall to meet the three-foot maximum height. Shown on the screen are the comparison of what was proposed with the concept plan, which would be the bottom of the two elevations and what is currently being proposed. A majority of the of the architecture for this building has not changed. However, I will highlight some minor adjustments that have been made since the concept plan. The applicant has adjusted the color of the storefront systems. Originally, it was proposed in a clear aluminum, and now they are proposing more of a black anodized aluminum for the storefront systems across the entirety of the building. The applicant has also changed the blue column, which you can find to the left of the east elevation, and they have changed it to a white, a cloud white column. There is one waiver, or sorry, there's not a waiver. The applicant is proposing parapet walls, especially for the two at the entrance, that are approximately four to five inches taller than the maximum six-foot height required for parapets. Planning staff is recommending that they adjust the height of the parapet walls on both of these structures to make sure that they meet the the maximum height for parapets. And shown on the screen are the south elevation, is the south elevation, which can be viewed from Banker Drive. Again, the changes for this elevation are the color in the storefront systems from clear aluminum to a black anodized aluminum, and also the changing of the column from blue chase to a cloud white. The west elevation, which can be viewed from the parking lot, the applicant did revise the awning that was originally shown above the entrance and also extended through a large portion of this elevation. They have revised it in the color to the black anodized aluminum and also cut it in half to just accent the entrance into the building. The applicant is requesting two waivers on this elevation. The first would be the transparency calculation. They are required to provide 50% transparency between two and eight feet for the storefront. They are proposing 33%, which is below. The reasoning for this request is because of the sensitivity of the operations happening within the building and these spaces. So they did not want to provide this transparency here. However, as you'll see in the landscape plan, they do try to accommodate for these, these, the lack of transparency with some some landscaping. The second waiver on this elevation would be the blank wall limitations, which you can see would be where the midnight brick is to the left, more to the left of the the west elevation. The requirement is 15 feet per code. The applicant is providing 23 feet. The request for this waiver is also because of the sensitive nature of the operations within the building as it is a bank. And shown on the screen are the, is the north elevation, which can also be viewed from the parking lot. And also, if you're coming from the north of Sawmill Road, the applicant is making similar changes to the rest of the elevations. Here, the applicant is requesting another waiver for the transparency calculations, similar to the west elevation. They are providing 23% transparency where 50 is required. And this is also due to the sensitive nature of the operations within the bank in these locations. And just to add, these are the proposed ATM elevations. The materials being proposed here do complement the building that is being proposed on the site. The applicant has included also a full landscaping plan, which is shown on the screen. The applicant is proposing a large variety in in landscaping across the site and has given an enlarged photo of the building and what is proposed around that. The applicant is presenting trees on the northwest portion of the site that are mature and will be preserved. The applicant's also providing ornamental and evergreen plantings around the building, around the foundation of the building. They are proposing evergreens around the screening wall to the southwest portion of the site and ornamental plantings and perennial plants around the Pocket Plaza and around the gateway feature to the south of the building. As discussed earlier, one consideration from the commission back in May. Was the intrigue of the gateway feature possibilities for this site. The applicant has revised their site plan to accommodate for this request from the commission. And this providing a pocket plaza at the corner of the intersection of Sawmill and Banker and also incorporating. An art feature between the open space type, the Pocket Plaza, Pocket Plaza and the building. Tonight, we will not, the commission will not be approving a specific art style or art piece. However. They will be approving the location of this and the process that is happening. And I know the applicant will be speaking towards. Where they are going with this and in their process in terms of choosing art that would work here and making sure that it is local and unique to Dublin. The applicant finally is proposing a master sign plan. This master sign plan includes three wall signs and one window sign. The three wall signs are identical and they are all approximately 37 square feet. They will be halo illuminated with channel letters in a chase blue octagonal logo and they will be constructed out of aluminum. The window sign will be approximately five square feet. And it'll be located in the transom above the rear entrance on the west elevation. The sign will be made of vinyl letters with the similar chase blue octagonal logo. Planning staff has reviewed this to all the criteria for this application. And are recommending approval of the waiver for the parking lot ground story transparency. Recommending approval of the waiver for the blank wall limitations, approval of the conditional use with no conditions. Approval of the preliminary development plan and found development plan with parking plan with five conditions. And planning is recommending this approval of the master sign plan. If the commission has any questions on any of these approvals or the cases tonight, I'm happy to answer them. I know the applicant has their team here to discuss the gateway location and other changes that they have made to the site. Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. Now looking to the applicant, who do we have here speaking for Chase? Mr. Messick? Do you have a presentation tonight or are you looking to have make a statement before we go into questions, comments and discussion?
Yes, yes. Thank you and good evening. Appreciate everybody's time and absolutely Zach's assistance to work through the redesign of some of the elements. I think we've come a long way. And excited about the proposal. Touching briefly on some of the building design and then we'll get to the site items, some of the landscaping. And then we can discuss the art piece. Jess Regginsberger with the Chase Design Management Team. Is able to discuss some of the elements for the artwork. And then finally, we'll we'll finish up with some of the signage elements and our proposed design intent there. So. As far as the building is concerned, Zach is absolutely right. We talked about it a little bit during the initial presentation at the concept plan review. And what we've done is we've taken some of the back of house area. Elements, the cash safe, the safety deposit vault, and we've pushed those towards the north. What that's allowed us to do is open up the storefront towards the south and tying in that artwork element that we'll get to in a little bit. But it allows that clear transparency towards Sawmill and then towards Banker as well. And it tucks all those secure areas very efficiently to the north side of the building and it creates more transparency in the glazing. To the south and to the to the east. So we thought that was a design element that played well for the site. It allows us to tuck all of the mechanicals. The gas meter and electrical connections, all that is off to the north, north portion of the building. As far as the waivers are requested, we think the intent of of the design of the building. Meets meets the design guidelines for the Bridge Street District. So as far as the site is concerned, we have modified the elements that Zach had pointed to. And I just want to touch briefly on some of the landscaping elements that we've added. As far as the overall site is concerned, there's a large landscape island between the building, the parking. That's adjacent to the building and then the drive through. And we wanted to break that down into a smaller scale for the parking field. One of the comments that we received early on was to increase the amount of landscaping. And really tie in the entire site and not treat that drive through conditional use as something that is just pushed to the back. So what we've tried to do is take some of the cap mint and some of the species and tie that in, starting with. The the screen wall where you exit the ATM area and and tie that into the other areas of the of the site. So it's a cohesive site as a whole. We're not creating these separate elements that don't relate to one another. We've also tried to with some of the trees that we're installing, keep the existing where we can, obviously, some of the mature species. But then also with the scale of the trees, break that down a little bit too with the ash, the elm or the maple and the elm. And then also the lilac, which is a little smaller in scale and add some visual interest. And then the last portion for the landscaping is kind of that north area where we have the curb cut entry off of Sawmill. We've created some additional visual interest in creating some different species in that area and breaking that down to a more pedestrian scale as well. Finally, working with staff, what what we've done is we've pulled that open plaza area, that pocket plaza. And we tied that into the south corner, just south of the building. Working with staff with the setback for the building. Originally, what happened. Was that we we were trying to meet the intent of the 25 foot setback and stay within that zone. So what what we we ended up doing is actually pushing the building a little bit further north, which allowed for the artwork element to exist. North of the existing easement for the electrical easement. Like was mentioned with the previous cases. That easement, we're not able to put foundations or put permanent fixtures in that easement. So the the artwork element that Jess will speak to in a little bit. We decided to push that just north of the easement and tie the building design. In with the artwork element and then that pocket plaza park as well. To tie all those elements in at that hard corner. One of the tricks of the corner there, there, there's a lot going on with utilities right at at the hard corner. We have. Some traffic signal boxes. We have some light poles. And and we've tried to create a design that that brought it, the seating area off the corner a little bit. Depending on the artwork, it will determine the exact layout for the seating. And how that relates to that that kind of open area to the north. So it's it's what what we wanted to do is create a starting point for the species and the plantings. And the extent of the improvements. And then as we work with the local artist, kind of create an area that's cohesive and inconsistent. So it's it's kind of in flux a little bit. We look to work with staff. And and work with commissioners on an ongoing basis as we get into that process. And with that, I think I'll turn over to Jess to discuss some of the artwork elements and how we see that playing out sequence wise and schedule wise.
Thank you, Mr. Messick.
Well, good evening, everyone, and thank you for your time today to discuss this exciting art opportunity. I know my own enthusiasm with art, so if I start to speak too fast, please tell me to slow down. Zach, by any chance, are we able to show the the deck? Thank you. So on page two, this is just our cover sheet. On page two, I'd like to emphasize a few points in that for over 60 plus years, JP Morgan Chase has supported. Emerging artists and holds a belief that art is a catalyst for connection. Through supporting artists as fellowships, providing their first gallery openings. And through activities such as Art at Work programs, JP Morgan Chase has an active and strong support for the arts community. As we move on to page three. Is there a little bit of a delay? Thank you. We spring from this ethos that Chase Retail has been building over the past year and a half, a community art program. Our core principle is that a local artist or arts education group is selected to create a dynamic composition. That reflects the community and our brand message. We believe that art included in a branch should be organic and not prescriptive. We do provide guidelines to the artist on certain topics to avoid, so we do not have any negative connotations. And we want to always amplify the positive in our branding message. As you see on this page, in the lower left hand corner and the upper right hand corner, these are two images from one of our first branches in Washington DC. Where we engaged with local arts education group called Arts on the Block. This group supported local art students who wanted to learn how to make art into a career. And by working with them and connecting with the community, the art apprentices created three panels. That reflected the diversity, integrity and vision for their community. And that is what we hope to create for this location as well. If we can move to page four. This plan or this page here shows our bank site plan and elevations. With a very prominent location at the intersection of Sawmill and Banker, the prime corner for an art installation would be that southeastern like corner. Where we have the open seating area. One note of caution that Tim mentioned, and I will say it again, is that we do have the electrical easement there. So pending if the artist provides a sculptural piece that is cohesive with the landscaping. Then parameters will be placed with the artist regarding foundation and installation requirements. Now, please note, though I mentioned a sculpture, there is also a potential for a mural on this building. And that would not impede with the building signage in any way. That southeastern corner of the building has what we at Chase Architecture and Design call a jewel box. And it's a glass projection of that building that you can look into the meeting space there. As per one of the amendments, we changed that blue column to the white finish instead. So it would be that area. And framing that area are panels that can be the canvas for the artist to create a painted work. At this time, unfortunately, we do not yet have a filtered approved list of artists. The evaluation is still proceeding through our reputational and risk department. And due to COVID, several of the process steps have lengthened, unfortunately. However, as the process moves along, we can certainly provide and work with the staff to. Show you the artist's portfolio. And the work that our company finds best aligns with our business brand message, as well as showcases what is unique about the Dublin community. So if we move on to the next page. And there we go. Some of the resources that we use to identify artists is that we have a very. Close working relationship with our corporate art collection team. And they have extensive connections throughout the nation. By submitting an art brief on what our intentions are for this space, we are provided back a list of known artists as well as contacts to local galleries and other art networks. A few of the resources that we've used while looking at the art list to go through reputational risk. Assessment is the Dublin Arts Council, as well as a national program called Beautify Earth. And that's shown on the next slide, just a little snippet of them. This digital platform is where artists can showcase their own portfolios, as well as providing connections for artists at a very hyper local level. Even as specific as Dublin, Ohio. So if we move on to the next few pages, we can scroll through some of our portfolio of work. We have over the past year and a half engaged with emerging artists such as Johnny Robles in Miami. This is a building site that is very close to the Windwood Walls. Where it's a large streetscape mural outdoor living museum that's constantly evolving with local emerging artists. And if we move on to the next few pages. These are a few other mosaic panels that we worked with Arts on the Block in Washington DC. Those three panels on the top are the panels that we saw back on page three, that we spoke about the inclusivity and diversity of that neighborhood. But the one on the bottom that Zach had referenced in his presentation is a 15 foot by 15 foot mosaic installation. And this was created on the concept of community connection supports and the artist gravitated towards an. A concept mix of his two grandmothers here. So there is a beautiful storyline behind it and it really gravitates and pulls to that specific community there. And as we move on to the next few pages, the top imagery there is working with established artist Sandra Spahn in in New York. She's done portraits for Tom Hanks and the musician Moby. So we have a wide ranging. Group of work from emerging artists, established artists, to people who want to learn how to make that a career while they're still in high school. So as we move forward with that, just a little bit of information, since 2018. We initially grew from three branches in one state to now 32 branches across 20 states. And that list is constantly growing. So as we look to this very unique Dublin site. We want to make sure that we're using our resources, that we're meeting the community goals and that we have our supports for the arts. Where our ultimate goal of the artwork here is to tie back to the Dublin community in a very dynamic and personal way. So again, I apologize that we do not have artists to review for this council meeting. Thanks, COVID. But as we move forward, like I said, we will be working with the staff members to produce and to update you on our direction for this piece. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Jess. So before we turn time over to the Commission for Councils, Mr. Messick. You are probably fully aware that there is a recommendation for disapproval for the sign package. Did you want to speak to that before we turn time over to the commission?
Yes, absolutely. And thank you for the additional time. We have Jennifer Carr with Chase Retail Design for Signage in the lead for the Midwest region to speak to some of the elements. I'll start off by saying the proposal that we submitted for for the master sign plan. Was with the intent of being sympathetic to both the sign ordinance and the Bridge Street guidelines. Relating to the quantity of signs and the types of signs and working with staff coming up with a a direction and a vision on how we can. Treat the the redevelopment of this site. In a way that it accomplished a number of goals. One of those goals is to de-emphasize the the signage to allow for this artwork, this gateway element to really be. Kind of the focus. So what we've done is we've created a package that we think allows for the branding and the wayfinding. But it also, as people arrive to the site, it doesn't detract from some of the other elements. And and we've done that with the types of signs that we were proposing. That that is within what we think is the design intent of of really what the signs need to be. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jennifer to speak to the specifics of the types of signs. And how that relates to the the zoning requirements.
Thank you, Ms. Messick. Welcome, Ms. Carr.
Good evening. Thank you. We are proposing the three halo illuminated channel letter sets on the building. They are 24 inches and they are consistent in size with our branding to keep it, since it's a three sided building with visual. On Banker and Sawmill Road. I wanted to emphasize the halo illumination as being unique to our brands. We normally do internal illuminated LEDs. That are a little bit brighter. These letter sets will be more subtle, more softer, more elegant to the architecture and to the to the corner. We thought that was pretty important. I did go with three building signs. Over two ground signs. I believe code is two grounds and two letter sets on the building and we felt. Pretty, pretty important that to have the two letter sets on Sawmill and Banker and then. The third letter set on the north elevation as you're driving down Sawmill, so you have that right in, right out. I I've given it a lot of thought about the ground signage here and I felt pretty strongly about. This, the building is streetscaped. It's very elegant and I didn't want the ground signage to take away from. The art concept or what we're establishing with the landscaping and everything. So. That's kind of my intent or the intent to have it that way and just looking for. The approval to move forward with that.
Thank you, Ms. Carr. All right, looking to the commission for questions for staff or the applicants. Ms. Kennedy, do you have any questions for staff or the applicant on the Chase applications?
Yeah, so just back to back to Mr. Hounshell just for a second. So just to clarify the building. Signs. So the applicant is opting for three building signs. So the applicant is opting for three building signs as opposed to the code which requires, fill in the blank for me again, just so I get my facts straight.
Yes, so they are permitted two wall signs and two ground signs since they are located at the inner side. They have two frontages, pretty much.
Right. Got it. Thanks for the clarification.
Mr. Hounshell, can you go through size on those two wall and two ground that are permitted?
So the size is determined based on the linear the length of each facade. So depending on, you know, if it's 100 feet in width for one frontage, they would be permitted, I believe it'd be 50 square feet. So it's half of whatever the linear footage is of that facade.
Thank you. All right, looking to the Commission, questions for staff or the applicant at this point? Mr. Schneer.
Yeah, I'm still not clear, Mr. Hounshell, what the staff's position is relative to the waiver. They're permitted. Why don't you run through what you consider the issue? Is it the number of signs, not an equal trade-off between what they're permitted and what they're proposing? And/or is it the size of the?
So that is, the direction of staff in terms of disapproval was not, it was not based on the number of signs that they were proposing. We agree with the applicant that I think ground signs would not be the right direction with this. So I mean, we agree with that. Where we're coming from, and I believe in the staff report, and in terms of the criteria for master sign plan, we had noted that the first criteria was not met, which would be that the master sign plan is consistent with the community plan, Bridge Street District, special area plan, Bridge Street District design guidelines, and other policies adopted by the city. Part of it was, in times where we have master sign plans, there's that flexibility in terms of more signs, but what are we getting back with it? And I think it was, although the all three are halo illuminated, they are the exact same sign on all three elevations. And I think that's what staff was really struggling with. It was that there was kind of that lack in diversity in what was being proposed. Internally, we're talking, there's certainly opportunities in terms of the awnings that are being proposed, especially on the Sawmill side. You can kind of look to reference for piada, is that's something that they have done with their building, but our staff felt like there are certainly opportunities to explore that don't utilize, that kind of have like the lack of diversity between the three wall signs. So that was the position of staff to move that way.
Thank you, Mr. Hounshell. Other questions for staff or the applicant? Ms. Box? You're muted, Ms. Box.
Sorry about that. I have a question a little bit about the architecture, and maybe it's to staff and also to the architect, Mr. Messick. I know that Chase is looking to create an environment that's edgy, fun, people come to sit, have coffee and all. As from what I'm seeing from the newer Chase banks across the country, it's a place to kind of, to come and stay a while. It's not necessarily a place you come in, you see a teller and you read. So in looking at the architecture, and it's really difficult, you know, in these one-dimensional things, but I noticed that they asked you to reduce some canopies and you're asking for reduced transparencies in window and that sort of thing. I'm just wondering, you know, what you're thinking is, if you could tell me what you thought about those reductions. I think these projections, these variations in facade, larger transparencies actually create a more interesting view from the street. So, you know, I worry that the bank is, that the building is starting to look a little conservative. You know, you reduce heights and you reduce these projections and you reduce transparency, and pretty soon the building becomes not quite so much fun. So can you talk to me about that?
Yeah, absolutely. I'll take that, and then staff can provide information if needed. But absolutely, you're right. So it's about the vibrancy and the energy within the building, and how does that translate to the architecture and the core and shell? And what we've attempted to do is, starting with the hard corner, that's where the energy wants to be. We have the two frontages, and we want to create that as open and airy and as lively as possible. So what we've done is we've taken as much of the fenestration and the clear glass storefront, and we brought it to Sawmill side, and we've maximized the percentage there. And we brought it to Banker, and then as you turn the corner into the parking area, we've kind of wrapped the south half of the building with glass. And what that allows to do is inside, and we haven't talked much about the floor plan and the layout, but that speaks to some of the design elements that have been updated over the last few years. And it's creating that living room or that space that you meet in. And it's a consultation center more so than a transaction center now. It's less about the teller lines, it's less about the walk-up EATMs, and it's more about the one-on-one or meeting with individuals and discussing the needs that those individuals have. To that end, we've created spaces inside that break it out in different uses. So when you come in the main entrance off of Sawmill or from the parking lot, either side of the entry there, it's open, airy, a lot of glass, and you see what's happening on the south half of the building. So you can see through the building, you can see through the enclosed offices, which are complete glass. So it's demountable furniture partitions that are glass. We have soffits up high that break that down into those offices. So you really can see through from Sawmill to the parking lot, and then through to the south as well. Starting at the south end, we have, well, let's start in the middle first. So we have an entry on either side that creates a living room zone where people can be greeted. And we have soft plush furniture, it kind of breaks down the scale a little bit and creates an energy that is less formal, less contemporary, and it's a more casual zone. And then from there, we have meeting spaces, we have the conference room areas, we have private client service office rooms. And then we also have booth seating towards the south. Oh, thank you, Zach. So to the top and to the bottom of the plan here, you'll see the main entryways, the 24-hour vestibule to the bottom of the plan, and then the entry off of Sawmill to the top of the plan. And in the center of that open office area is where we have the living room. It has the S-curve seating area, it has some different table heights and designs. And that's the congregating area. Just to the south of the living room, so to the right on the plan, is the three booths where that breaks it down into more consultation, one-on-one discussions. And that's along Banker Drive, right where we're going to have that artwork element, and then also the additional open plaza seating area. The jewel box that Jess had referenced earlier is just to the top and to the right on the plan. And that's where we have kind of that jewel box, open glass, that allows you to see through that area to the living room area and to the other spaces. So, long story short, the entire south half of the building is kind of open, and there's a lot of movement. There's people where it's more standing and consulting and in a more casual area. And then what we've done is we've taken those back-of-house areas, and we've shifted that to the north. So the waiver request is really so that we can open up the south area and kind of put the vault, safety deposit boxes, the viewing rooms for viewing your valuables, and then some of the data room and cash safe areas, which need to be ultra-secure. And we locate that to the area that we think that fenestration is less desirable. It's still desirable, so if we could create an open area, we absolutely would. But for safety and security, we want to create those safe zones. Where we're able to introduce clear story glazing, we've absolutely done that. So near the cash safe area, where we have the print room, just to the left of the 24-hour vestibule, we have some clear story windows to provide daylighting and open up that space a little bit, but still provide security. And we've done the same thing to the north at the lounge and the restroom areas. So we've introduced daylighting to those areas.
I really appreciate you explaining that. As I look at the front of the building on the east elevation, and I look at how they had to reduce the canopy, I'm just, a couple of thoughts. I'm not an architect, so I wouldn't pretend to design. But as I'm driving down Sawmill, and by the way, the gateway element, thank you very much for that. I think that that is going to be, I think that's going to set your building apart on the street. I really think it's going to, it's going to jumpstart what's happening on Sawmill. I think it's a, it's just a gift, really. But I wonder, as I'm coming down Sawmill, and I drive it all the time, and I see your building, and if I want to be attracted to it, I'm wondering if there's an element across the front, maybe in the canopy piece, that you might be able to utilize your, a more interesting signage. Whether that's a half-curved canopy, a sense of a softer, a softer rounded, half-round piece, something that breaks up all of the squareness of it. I love the transparency, and I absolutely understand as you look in, you're going to see activity. And I think that's wonderful. But I'm wondering if there isn't an element across the front that would, that would just be a different kind of jewelry in the way of a canopy that would catch your eye, that you could utilize a more interesting signage on. I don't know what that is. I don't pretend to design it. I'm just, I'm looking for something a little edgier on the Sawmill facade that stands out and makes you take notice. I feel like that's missing. I don't know what it is. But that's what I feel like. And I think that however you can enhance your little jewel box on the side, whether that's whether your projections that go between the linear projections that come out, I don't know what you call those, whether they're enhanced in some way, whether that really shows off that corner. That's just my impression of that. So I just wonder what you, you know, what you might think about. They're asking you to lower your parapet, they're asking you to shorten your canopies, and I'm just wondering what good that does to your facade. What's the interesting thing that happens there when you do all those things? So what are you left with? I just feel like you've got a missing link there. Just some food for thought.
All right, James kicked us off into the discussion portion of this evening. So Christina, do you want to go next?
Sure, thank you, Ms. Call. I think the team has done an excellent job with the revisions that you've brought forward for this case today. Very excited about the focus on art and the art feature that was explained earlier. Thank you so much for your efforts there. I think Ms. Call might touch on this at some point, but from an approval perspective, and maybe this is a question for staff, how this art installment would be approved, or what the approving body would be in that space? Maybe more of a question back to staff.
So that, it gets a little tricky, and I might lean on Claudia to maybe further explain this. But it's my understanding is that the commission would not approve the specific art installation itself. That's to try not to contain content that's being displayed. It's really leaving it up to the applicant's group, the Dublin Art Council, whoever they consult, and leaving that to a third-party, third-party art group that would do that. So that's my understanding of that. I don't know, Claudia, am I missing anything with that?
No, I don't think you do at all. It is definitely something where the applicant has committed as part of this application to include art. And that's sort of where we're stopping, so to say. And let them work with, whether it's the DAC or whether it's a local artist, we definitely do not, are not asking the commission to approve something specific, nor are we in the position to do that.
Okay, understood. No, I just, I want to give kudos to the Chase team. I think that's a really cool concept, and I think it's going to bring some vibrancy and some excitement to the space. So thank you for taking the time to dig into that a little bit more. We really appreciate it. Let's see, other questions that I have? No, I think, I think it's been covered already. So thank you so much. That's it for me right now.
Ms. Kennedy, do you want to speak to your comments on the sign package?
On sign package, yes, I do. So sign package, I heard the applicant say that the goal of the sign package was to de-emphasize the signage. And I also understand that from staff, staff is looking for diversity of signage. So I think these obviously seem to be potentially opposing forces. I personally don't have concerns with the sign package as it's been brought forward. It seems to have been minimized, and the consistency across the building is visually appealing. So I would be in favor of the sign package as it stands.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Mr. Schneer?
I applaud, just thinking, listening to this, that exciting bank used to be thought of as an oxymoron, but you've done a good job of breaking that up, so kudos to you for that. I had, we called an issue with the amount of parking. I just go on record to say, I just don't think more parking is better, but we discussed that at the last meeting. So I'm okay with that. And with respect to the signage, I actually, I like the sign package the way it is. I guess there's a time and a place for exciting signage. And I think consistency and branding is important in an institution like a bank, and so I'm perfectly fine with that. So I'm
All right, Mr. Schneer, just two more questions, and Ms. Kennedy, I'll go back to you for your comments on this. The waivers, they're requesting two waivers. The building types, the parking lot, ground story transparency, and the blank wall limitations, just your feel. Mr. Schneer first, and then we'll go to Ms. Kennedy on support of those two items.
I'm okay with the waivers. I guess I'm buying into the security issue. I'm not crazy about the waiver on the transparency. And I guess I would say, I would ask staff if that's, before I go on the record on that, if that's consistent, have we had any other situations where we waive transparency because of the particular use? Because it's a compelling argument, that's a bank and transparency, it's not a retail shop. So maybe you can comment on that before I make
Yeah, so waiver, I mean, obviously, the approval of waivers are never going to be the same for any given application. For this one in particular, obviously, it is up to the commission to decide whether their reasoning for the waiver is appropriate for the site. We have had, we've had, at least with Bridge Park, and I'm not an expert on Bridge Park, but they have had waivers in terms of transparency that they are providing. So it's, it has happened in the past in terms of transparency being provided for any given building. Claudia, can you think of any specific sites that have maybe done something similar to this?
I was thinking about specifically regarding safety concerns. I can't think of one. We've definitely run into this for restaurant spaces where those kitchen areas and prep areas needed to be less transparent, so you wouldn't see some of those more undesirable parts of a business. But in terms of, of safety, I cannot think of one.
Okay, thank you. Well, that is, that's a justifiable reason too, and the fact that waivers have been granted Okay, thank you. That, well, that is, that's a justifiable reason too, and, and the fact that waivers have been granted for, based on use, I'm fine with that, to be.
Thank you, Mr. Schner. Ms. Kennedy, back to you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement with Mr., with Commissioner Schner's comments as well. I think that the applicant has provided the reasoning behind the waiver on transparency, and from a safety and security perspective, it makes sense based on that argument.
Thank you. Ms. Fox, your comments on the application, considering also the sign package and the two waivers.
Okay, I, I'm not, I'm not opposed. You know, I have a question, though. The requirement says it's 50% storefront transparency on street-facing facades. The north is not necessarily a street-facing facade, and neither is the west. So what is the, what is the requirement, percentage requirement on non-street-facing facades on transparency?
The requirement is 50% on non-street-facing facades.
And what about on street-facing? Do they meet the street-facing facade in percent?
They do. On both the, the east and south elevations, they meet those requirements.
They exceed it?
Yes.
All right. Okay, that helps. So, a, a couple of things. I, I made my comments about, I think that there needs a little adjustment on the, on the frontage to try to, to create something that just is a little bit edgier in the way of the canopy, or designing, to be able to put some signage or your logo. I'm not opposed to the logo. When it comes to the sign package, very rarely does our staff disapprove these things. And because they are, I believe that that conversation needs to continue. So on, based on that alone, I would not support passing the master sign package today. As for the, the rest of it, I believe we have, you know, a, a really nice package. I would like to see a little bit more energy when it comes to final development on that front facade. I understand that the gateway piece is in flux, and I totally get that. And I, I have great trust that you're going to come up with a really beautiful piece there. I also, like Mr. Schneider, I'm not crazy about all that parking, but I am really, and I don't think that you're ever going to use it all, but, and you're also surrounded by a sea of parking, which is one of the things that we dislike so much about that Salmo corridor right now. But your intensity of landscape design is going to mitigate that, I believe. And I think that we'll have to really take a look at how that plays out when you get the gateway piece. You, you finish this landscaping piece in the back, and you actually, if you can create a parking lot that doesn't look like a parking lot, then I'm going to say you can have those spaces. But as you know from your neighbors, it's an asphalt jungle that no one wants to go to, no one wants to walk to, no one wants to even park in, for goodness sake. So if you can create an inviting parking lot to enhance the invitation into your living room bank, then I think that you will have, you will have set an example for the street. So I'm, I'm okay with the transparency waivers. One other thing I'd like to comment on, I drove down Sawmill a couple nights ago to kind of see what Piata would, would do as I'm, as I'm driving in the evening, and what your bank looks like. I'm going to really look at your lighting. The difference between a, a bank's lighting and Piata's lighting might be huge. The way you light the gateway feature, the soft ambient lighting that you have glowing out from your bank and in your surrounding parking area, could be the difference between making that whole corner inviting, or your lighting could become like a gas station lighting and ruin the entire effect of what you're trying to do. So I think lighting here in the evening is going to set you apart. I think it's really important you do a really nice lighting package. So those are my comments.
Mr. Suplack?
Real quick, I think this question is for Zach. The six-inch parapet reduction, that is, that is off of the tallest elements?
Yeah, so that would be off of the tallest elements only. The other elements meet the requirement. These ones were, it was maybe four, it is four to five inches over, so it's very minimal. But sticking to code, that's, they are just barely over.
Thank you. And, and one other question. So I heard it two different ways, depending on who was presenting it. I, I think in the presentation of the project, the canopy was reduced, the length of canopy was reduced on the one side, but that wasn't a stipulation from staff?
No, not that I'm aware of, that that was brought up from staff's perspective. That was an architectural element that was considered by the applicant to be reduced.
Got it, okay. Okay, generally, I'm going to, I'm going to rattle through parapet reduction. I'm not, I'm not so concerned about, you know, you're not going to adjust your proportions that much with a six introduction. Waiver on transparency, I'm, I'm fine with. There is always a back of the house, and how you deal with the back of the house matters. You guys have done a very good job of sort of clustering it. And even though, even though there's some blank walls, they still have some interest. You also have a few sort of, some vegetation there that is, is going to get a little bit of height to it. So I, I think that's lost, and your, your landscape designer was conscious of that. I think that's lost in your elevations at present. I am, I, I go back and forth on the signage package. Generally, I don't mind that they're all sort of the same kind of chase, chase, chase. I do, I do grow concerned that the, how about this, the, the short end of, ends of the building are, I'm going to say 46 feet. So the stipulation in the codes suggests that that should be max a 23-square-foot sign on that building. That a lot of times is, you know, proportionate kind of feel. I, I worry that on, on those two ends, the signs are a little bit disproportionate, that they're over scaled. And while they could stay, could stay the same chase sign, I, I, I wonder personally if they should be smaller. I am a little disappointed. I'm just going to, this is just me. It's not going to really change anything. I'm a little disappointed. I, I really liked the long canopy on the west facade. That was really nice. It was a, a nice touch. It probably got taken out relative to value engineering. If there's any merit to putting it back in, food for thought. It is, it is a really nice element, and it does help with that sort of, the interest down that facade that lacks a great deal of transparency. And lastly, I, I'm going to say sort of on the art piece, one, I think you guys are doing a bang-up job. Jessica, kudos. It's going in a really good direction. I, I guess I'm just, you know how this is? Context matters, right, relative to art? And just, just hanging a piece of art on the building, say, in, on this building, wouldn't make a great deal of sense. My hope is that it's a little more spatial, that you experience it, that you can potentially walk around in it, that maybe, maybe that's sculptural. I don't know what that means. That, that's between you all and the artist. But I, I'm just saying that, right, just hanging a, hanging a panel on the building isn't going, isn't kind of going to hit, hit the mark. For whatever that's worth, to you, as you guys continue down that path, it's, generally, it's a nice project. I, you know, the, these comments aside, I'm generally a, a, a supportive across the board. Thank you all for putting in the good legwork.
Thank you, Mr. Suplack. Mr. Fishman? You're, you're muted, Mr. Fishman.
Okay, now, I'm there, right?
Yes.
Somebody's turning me off, maybe. Anyway, can Zach tell me exactly what the sign, sign code is on, what, how much, what is the code?
Are you saying what are they permitted for this site?
Yes.
So they are permitted, if they were to not pursue a master sign plan and pursue to meet code, they would be required, they would be allowed up to two wall signs that would be located on the Sawmill and banker frontages, and they're also permitted to ground signs on those frontages as well. The, the wall signs would be, the square footage would be half of whatever the linear length of that elevation is, up to 50 square feet. Ground signs would be 24 square feet max. I think the height of wall signs is 15, max. I, I believe what the east elevation along Sawmill is a little taller than, than what code would permit, but that's also because of the architectural style of that, that element of the entrance. It, it just fits there. That's why they had proposed that.
Okay. Basically, we're out of code because of the size of the signs, correct?
We're out of code because they're proposing a wall sign on that north elevation. They're technically not permitted that sign on that elevation. They are over square footage on both the north and south elevations, and then a little bit of height on the east elevation. I, I don't have the plans in front of me, but I can't recall what the heights are of the other two elements.
I got it, okay. That's what I thought. Okay, what, my, I, I, I hate to be negative at this point, but I, I, I think we need to follow the code we can. The reason we vary from the code on signs is kind of a hardship. In other words, if you can't find the building, or you can't, you don't see the building, or whatever, in this case, that's not the case, okay? You'll be able to, you'll be able to know that's chase as you drive down Sawmill or any of the other streets. So I, I really think that the sign package, the signs should be smaller in, in proportion, and, and, and attempt to meet code. The transparency issue, I, I understand. They, they gave a great, I was against that when I read the, 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 the report, but, but I think they gave a great reason and, and for security and so on. So I, I think that's the reason we vary from code, is if we have a, a really good reason for varying from security, hardship, can't see the building, whatever. And so I, I'm, I'm, I'm in, in line with the transparency issue. Not a problem for me. The other thing is, you kind of stole my thunder there with the thing. I've been thinking about that darn thing, hanging murals on the building, and, and Dublin's not a mural-type town. We are sculptures and so on. And the problem with murals, if you drive around Columbus, people have a tendency to alter murals after they're up, okay? And, and even our murals we have in our tunnels, which I use quite a bit, they've been altered by amateur artists, okay? And, 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 and so I, I, I think that, that I, I, I agree with you 100%. Slapping something on the side of the building isn't what we should do. And, and I think, I'm not criticizing the project at all. I think it, you, you've given a great deal of thought. I like everything, but I think the signs, and, and I think the, the artwork should be really thought through thoroughly as far as putting something on the building. I think it should be something that's a sculpture, something that really accents that corner. Other than that, I think this project's been given a great deal of thought. I think I, I'm, I'm really happy that, 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 that you, you came back with, with this design. Except I, I'm, I, I think that staff, this board, and council spent years working on the codes, and I, I keep seeing, we, we're getting so many, everybody comes in once a variance for the code. I think if you have a good reason, that's great. But I think that in this case, there's no way you're not going to be able to know that's a chase. And so with signs that, 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 that can have a good master plan that meet the sizes, I think we should, we should look forward to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Mr. Grimes?
Well, a lot of great comments. I don't know what there is left to add at this point. However, I would say that, yeah, I'm in favor of the waivers. I understand the need for security. I think they've shifted a lot of the focus to the end of the building where the gateway is, and that's as we've asked them to. So I think that's a great accommodation. To approve the conditional use, I'm in favor of that. The preliminary and final development plan with the conditions, I'm in favor. To the master sign plan, I, I can live with that. I like Ms. Fox's idea of having something a little more fazzy in there. I like to have something that really gives it, I don't know if that could be possible, whether it's on the side that's on the gateway, if it's one of the three signs that is, it has a little bit more to it than the others. I know that they like to stick with a very standard, you know, theme around the building, but perhaps there's some room for something to improve on at least that one side of the building. So I, I would be in favor of the master sign, this sign plan as well.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. So I will make my comments brief. I echo the, the rest of the commission. I think you've done a wonderful job bringing this back to us. But I am going to speak to Mr. Fishman's concern. I, I have the same concern with the sign. So the code reads two wall signs, two ground signs, and if we were talking about a three-sided, you know, three-frontage street, I might have a different opinion. But with that north elevation sign that's facing a parking lot, I don't see the need to add that third sign. Coupled with, what the sign package actually looks like is it looks like you have four building signs, because you have a Chase logo and a Chase name on every single side of the building. Three of them are wall-mounted signs, and one is the vinyl above the windows. And so I, I'm not in favor of four-sided unless there is a, a really good reason as to why those four sides all need to be branded. I think that Mr. Fishman has, has a great point with everyone's going to know, especially with your visibility. You know, Mr. Messick went to great lengths to talk about how the inside of the building reaches out to the outside and vice versa. The outside reaches into the inside. And so there's going to be some engagement there anyway. And so I, I'm not in favor of including that third sign into the master sign plan. And so I would side with the staff's recommendation to disapprove the sign plan a, as it is. So I'd like to ask the applicant if there would be consideration, and I'm one person, so you can, you can count to four, but if there is desire for consideration this evening to reduce the signs to the two sides with the vinyl applique on the third side, so essentially deleting the north elevation sign for consideration this evening, or if you would like us to move forward on consideration of the sign package as it is.
That is a great question. And just two, can I just have two comments back before I make that decision? One, okay, one is, we did look at the square footage, and with the three building signs, we are under the allowable square footage. With the code is how I understand it. We would be allowed 120 square feet. That would be the two building signs and two ground signs. Would they be a smaller ground sign? Sort of similar to probably what is there now with the Boston Market ground signs. And then, so what we're putting up there now is 115 square feet versus 120 square feet. I would consider losing the north elevation, but I still feel pretty confident about having some sort of branding there to bring in the right in, right out from Sawmill. So a ground sign, I would want to put a ground sign over on the north elevation on that corner.
All right, looking to the commission, is there interest with what they are allowed under this? Under the code, they're, they're coming in with, they're allowed two ground signs and two wall signs. Would you be in favor if the applicant is amenable to it to delete the north-facing building sign and allow a ground sign as per code for consideration? Mr. Fishman?
I, I would like them to meet code, okay? And, and so, so if they can meet code, make the signs smaller and, and, and put the ground sign in, fine. But I, I think that we've got it. We, they, they're, they're not showing me a hardship to make those signs bigger and more. So if they meet code, I'm in.
So looking to the rest of the commission, and I'll have one caveat there for you, Mr. Fishman, in just a moment. But the rest of the commission, in favor? Ms. Ms. Fox?
No, you know, I disagree. I don't think we need more ground signs along Sawmill Road. There's so much clutter. So I don't disagree with the, when you have this new contemporary building, to add another ground. So I don't disagree with the, when you have a, this new contemporary building, to add another ground sign, I think just is not to the best advantage. I personally think that, um, that this is an easily worked out thing with staff. And, and I'd like to hear staff's comment before we just on the fly try to redesign. A master sign plan is supposed to bring some unique energy in its design, you know, forward. And that's why I think I, I would vote against it right now, because I do believe they could put a, a little bit more thought with staff and come up with a way to get that frontage a little bit more interesting. I'd even allow that, that little larger sign if I thought that it created an energy on the street that was a little bit more unique than just simply, um, the ones that we have here and the number. I'm, I'm with you, Ms. Call, that we don't need it on all four sides. But there might be an opportunity to use a logo in a place of a north sign instead of, um, that sort of thing. So I, you know, I, I hesitate to, uh, to put a ground sign back in, because I don't really think that's what we want anyway in a master sign plan.
So looking back to the applicant, Ms. Carr, Mr. Messick, would you like us to proceed with the, the package as we have received it tonight?
If we table it, do we just bring the package back next month?
Yes.
Um, my, I do have one other comment. Um, Ms. Fox was making, um, was comparing us to Piata. And, um, how Piata has their letter sets kind of on a rim. So I did look at that, um, over our doors on the north. Or, let me, hold on, let me look at my elevations here. I did, I did look at that at one point in time over the canopy on the door. But because there is glazing right behind the door or right behind the letters, the letters wouldn't be visible. Um, at, they wouldn't be visible at all. They would blend, really, our white letters would blend in with the glazing. So that is why I, that's why I put them on the building the way I did. Um, so I did look at that, so, um, just so everybody's aware of that. And if we do table it, then, um, we'll have to come back next month with some other creative.
Yeah, I like the fact that you put halo lighting. I think that's, that's a very nice, uh, premium, um, look, and I, and I like that. I just think if you have the opportunity to work some of these little details out with staff, that you should, you know, that you can tell that the commission is amenable to, uh, to making sure that you get the right look. I just think it needs a little bit more massage.
Would you consider architectural lighting? As part of the branding?
Describe that to me.
So if there was some blue, um, blue lighting along some of the, um, the canopies or along the building to kind of give it a blue glow?
Yes.
With our halo, would the halo illuminated letters still be, um, be okay with that? If we went down that path and I showed a night, a night rendering?
Yeah, I think that, to me, it would be, because I've seen some of the other chase banks and, and you're using some of that. And it really does, it's sort of the jewelry that I'm talking about. It just kind of sets off a nice evening look, um, along, without being, without being gaudy. I mean, I think it would just depend, yeah.
So can I get a straw poll on the blue lighting? So Ms. Fox is in favor. Ms. Kennedy? Okay, I have five. All right, so Ms. Carr, would you like us to table the master sign plan portion of this evening?
Yes, I'd be, I, well, I would be more confident if I came back with night, um, a night rendering to show the illumination with some architectural lighting.
Yeah, right.
But I don't, but I would like, yes, as, as long as everybody I'm here with agrees with that. Seth and Tim and Jeff.
All right, Ms. Carr has made a request to table motion number four. All right, any other discussion at this point before we vote? Mr. Fishman?
I'm so sorry, but I, 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 I think that we don't want to get away from the fact that they can, they can redesign it. And I, I, I agree with being creative and, 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 um, our, our board's ideas on that. But I, I still think that, that we have the codes so that we, if we can stay within the code, we should stay within the code. So I would like to see it come back. If you want, if you think blue lighting is going to be great, if everybody agrees that, that's fine. But I, I think that we can make it, we can bring it in, in code. We, we gave, we're giving a, a variance because of the transparency to building, because that's a great excuse. Uh, I mean, that's a great, great reason, uh, security and so on. But the signs, I think, need to be in code. The next guy coming in is going to say, you, this is what you did for chase, we just want a little more. But, but, but they're not code either. And so I, I think we really need to start thinking about, uh, uh, in code. So I would be in favor of tabling it and listening to you if, but I would really emphasize that, that's my feeling. I can't talk to the rest of the people. You might get a straw poll on that, that it comes back.
The only call out that I would have there is we do have the master sa- sign package plan avenue for them to allow a little bit of flexibility. So if there is desire to make a trade-off between the two entitled ground signs and the two building signs, and we see that that holds value for the city to perhaps incorporate three wall signs instead of two and two. To Jane's point, you know, Sawmill does get very, very loud and very, very busy. We have flexibility there. So, uh, you know, you look at, Mr. Fishman, your comment about, you know, there has to be a reason. I think that there's a, an excellent case for that on this building. That sign height on the east elevation is not supposed to exceed 15 feet, but it's at 16 feet, three inches, because it's window right below it. And, and it doesn't make sense to put it at 15 feet.
And, and I agree with you there and, 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 uh, I'm not, I don't have a problem with that at all. Uh, what, I, but I think the signs can be smaller. You can see the smaller signs and they can be just as exciting as a bigger sign. And I think that, that, that if this, I'm more concerned about, about this, this, uh, the size and the number, of course, too. But I agree with you 100% that if, if we can, we, we can change the configuration and, 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 and do something different. I'm in with that, yeah, but.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. All right, I am looking for multiple motions this evening. Um, motion to approve two waivers. Mr. Grimes, I have a first. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. And Mr. Supalak, Ms. Beal.
Mr. Schneier.
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Fishman.
Are we, we're not approving the sign waiver yet?
Waivers.
Or waivers, okay, fine, yes, yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Call.
Yes.
Mr. Supalak.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes.
Thank you. Uh, motion number two, to approve a conditional use. Do I have a first? Mr. Grimes, second? Ms. Beal.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
This is Supalak.
Yes.
Mr. Fishman.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Schneer.
Yes.
Ms. Call.
Yes. Motion number three, to approve the preliminary and final plat, uh, final development plans with a parking plat with five conditions. Do I have a first? Mr. Grimes, second?
Second.
Mr. Supalak, Ms. Beal.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Fishman.
Yes.
Mr. Supalak.
Yes.
Ms. Call.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes. Mr. Schneer.
Yes.
And then looking to legal, I have a request to table motion number four. Do we need a motion to table?
Uh, no, just, we'll just note in a minute that tableed the applicant's request.
Thank you very much. All right, well, thank you very much. It is a late evening, but thank you for enduring with us. We are really looking forward to getting this redeveloped. As you know, Boston Market has been dark for a while and we have a, a plethora of people who are looking for, um, cleanup around the city while we pride ourselves on all of the different areas. There are some areas that need some love, so thank you for giving some love to this, this area. And we look forward to seeing you back very, very soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You have a good evening. All right, communications, staff.
I'm just very quickly, for our next meeting, which is scheduled for the 20th, we have, um, only administrative cases, um, coming forward. So we're looking again at the, um, the property maintenance code, the, uh, code for the update for the temporary signs. And then, um, council had also asked or deferred a conversation to the commission regarding, um, some of the residential, um, developments we've seen lately, regarding, um, that conversation about setbacks and intensity versus density. So, um, that's something that we're going to provide some information to you all and then would like to have a conversation to give us some guidance as to where we're going with that, um, with that particular topic. Um, Jenny, do you have anything else?
Nope, that's all I got. All right, for the commission, those are just administrative cases. There would be no prep meeting that week, is that correct?
Oh, good, good question, actually, um.
They've got it up to you, I guess, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, so once we send out packet, if we have need for a prep meeting, can we just email in and ask for that prep meeting to be held? It's just us, so yeah, you can just email Claudia or myself, yeah, yes.
Yeah, perfect.
Perfect. And then just for the rest of the commission, I will not be available on September the 3rd. So Christina has agreed to chair that meeting, so thank you for being willing. I much appreciate it.
I want to compliment the, uh, this board. We were half an hour early, according to Claudia's.
I tried really hard. I said I threw the gauntlet down, so we had that, we had a goal. Okay, well, if we have nothing else, then I will, um, stop the live stream if you're, once you're ready to adjourn. All right, anyone else, communication?